Good morning. Today is Tuesday, November 24th. It's a regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nev.
Here.
Richard Valley, Doug Verboon, Craig Peterson.
Here.
Richard Fagundis.
Here. All five members are present today and looking forward to a good meeting. And would you all please rise for invocation from Brian Sidehammer, Kingdom Culture 2.0. Morning, Brian.
Good morning. Let us bow our heads and pray. Father God, send a flood of living water to wash over this entire county and tear COVID from every man, woman, and child. Let every family visitor to this county be healed, and when they return, bring with them only good memories. Because you still do miracles, Father God, and right now, we need your grace more than ever. Bless these proceedings, Father God, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. You all following in? Flight salute, ready? Very good, guys. Right now, we're going to go to unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the agenda or any other items of interest to the public that is within the subject jurisdiction of the board. Two minutes are allowed. Do you have anybody in the audience that would like to speak?
I have no one.
We have Keith Fagundis in the back right now. Morning, Keith. How are you today? Well, thank you, Keith. Supervisor Peterson, you done with your blankie?
My blankie?
Your blankie?
Yeah, but it's got some cooties on it.
Got cooties on it? All right. Okay, well, thank you, Keith. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chair.
Counsel.
Yes. Lee Burdick, County Counsel. I would like to introduce the board to one of our new deputy county councils who just joined us earlier this week. Tran Nguyen is a new deputy county council who will be assisting us with COVID enforcement, responding to Public Records Act requests, and assisting with child protective services discovery.
Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. Welcome.
Keith, anything? Anybody online?
We don't have anyone on the line, but I did receive four letters, and give me just a moment to be able to recognize those letters. We received a letter from the City of Hanford, signed by John Baxter, Mayor of the City of Hanford, that will become part of the minutes. We also received a letter from the Kings County Office of Ed by Todd Barlow. And we received a letter from the City of Hanford, Hanford Police Department, signed by Parker Server, Chief of Police. And we received a letter from residents Charles Gazerek and Elizabeth Hera Gazerek and Timothy and Stephanie Hera, and that will become part of the record.
Thank you very much. Hearing none, we'll move on to approval of minutes. Approval of minutes from November 10th, 2020, regular meeting. Moved by Supervisor Fagundis, second by Supervisor Nev. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Richard Nev?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Hi.
Craig Peterson?
Hi.
Richard Fagundis.
It will prove it. Five in favor. And we'll move on now to the consent counter. All items listed on the consent counter are enacted by one motion, and that's one board member might hold on separately. With your pleasure.
Move presented, Ms. Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Nev, second by Supervisor Fagundis. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nev?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Hi.
Richard Fagundis.
That was easy. Both five members have voted in favor, and we have proved that presented. So we'll go on now to regular dinner items, and we have James Herb from the Department of Finance. James, are you on the line this morning?
He is on the line. You will need to unmute yourself.
Okay, I believe I'm unmuted. This is Jim Herb, Director of Finance. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes, sir. You sound great.
Okay, good. I'm here today to request budget adjustments, mainly to finish out our Finance Enterprise project. We're requesting an actual NCP of $55,946. $43,000 of that will come from Social Services or HSA, and $12,000 of that would come from almost $13,000 from contigencies. We'll use this in the following way that I have on the table there, mainly to produce reports that we need now that we're live with Finance Enterprise, and it's been just a little bit over a year. We still have reports that we're working on. The main one is the salary projections, which has turned out to be complicated. Salaries are complicated. We try to incorporate step increases, special pay, and a lot of detail into our projections to get them as accurate as possible. So that's why we have some allocated to Cherry Road, some to Capital Partnerships, and some to Central Square. Capital Partnerships has been helping with the budget implementations, and so we've extended their contract to September 30th of 2021 to assist admin in developing next year's budget. So that's my presentation. Do you have any questions?
James?
Mr. Chair, and the board, members of the board, Rebecca Campbell, County Administrative Officer. I would just add that annually, we have included money in the budget for the salary forecast. And this, you know, the last year and this year, we're still trying to develop the new salary forecast within the new system. So since IT went to the model of outsourcing programming efforts, we have included money into the budget for just assisting us with the salary forecast each year. So I wanted to add that point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions or comments?
Move for adoption, Ms. Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Nev, second by Supervisor Fagundis. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Hi.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Hi.
Richard Fagundis.
Yes.
Five in favor. Thank you, Jim. Appreciate your presentation.
Okay, thank you.
We'll move on now to Fire Department Chief William Lynch.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Bill Lynch, Kings County Fire Department. I'm here today to bring two items before your board for approval. The first one being the agreement for fire services with the City of Avonale. This year, it's a continuation of what the amount was last year, the amount of $365,000. This money has been included in our 2021 budget. So it is in there. As you know, we provided fire services to the City of Avonale for many, many years under a contract, and this contract just is an addendum to the 1920 agreement that just moves forward one year at the same amount. I'd be happy to answer any questions somebody may have.
Thank you, Chief. Any question or comments for the fire chief? Moved by Supervisor Fagundis, second by Supervisor Nev. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Nev?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Hi.
Richard Fagundis.
Yes.
Five in favor. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next, excuse me, the next item I have before you is approving the replacement of a Type III fire apparatus from the California Office of Emergency Services. In their wisdom, they want to move around some of the apparatus that's currently assigned to our region, and they want to give Kern County several of the same types of apparatus and replace our apparatus with a brand-new 2020 Type III fire apparatus. So we're really excited to get the new vehicle. This agreement has been reviewed by county council and been approved by them. What it basically does is it removes our current fire apparatus that we have that's assigned to us by CAL FIRE, or excuse me, by OES, and replaces it with a 2020 model. We have been a recipient of an engine for many, many, many years, way back when I was a child even, so that's a long time. So I'd like to ask that you approve the acceptance of the fire apparatus and temporary transfer of the vehicle, and approve the agreement and temporary transfer of the equipment, and have the chairman sign both the agreements. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. I know a long time ago, being your child, it was probably no gas engine, so it's probably horse.
I wonder if the horses came with that engine?
I think, I'm sure they did. I'm sure they did.
Moved by Supervisor Fagundis?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Nev. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nev?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Hi.
Richard Fagundis.
Yes.
Okay, five in favor. Thank you, Chief, for your presentation. We'll move on.
Thank you.
Department of Public Health. And I don't know who we have on the line today. It's either Ed Hill, Nancy Durkney, or Clarissa.
Good morning, Joe Person, Verboon, and the members of the board. The first item that we have on your agenda is regarding the Home Visitation Coordination Funds that we are requesting for the board to authorize the Director of Public Health to retroactively sign the Home Visiting Coordination Program Agreement that will cover October 1st, 2020 through June 30th of 2022. The amounts allocated by First Five California for this agreement are $70,833 for fiscal year 2020 through 2021, and $54,826 for fiscal year 2021 through 2022. These will be allocated under the Health Department Grant Budget Unit under a new account of state aid under Home Visiting Coordination. First Five California authorized funding in the amount of $24 million to coordinate home visitation already existing in California counties. In Kings County currently, we have a number of home visiting programs through Kings County Public Health Department, Kings Community Action Organization, as well as Naval Air Station Lomori, Sleet and Family Support. This funding will allow for collaboration and coordination of home visiting services through Kings County to ensure that services are offered to those that are in need. The majority of the agreement funds will be utilized to support selection of a program consultant coordinator and a database. The remainder of the home visiting agreement funding will cover education and outreach material, training, travel, and other similar costs, as well as wages and fringe benefits of .05 full-time equivalent for the first five program officers to manage the project and provide guidance and direction. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have regarding this agreement.
Thank you very much, Clarissa. Any questions or comments? Anybody need a home visit?
Probably. Yeah, probably. Move for adoption. So movement, Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Nev, second by Supervisor Peterson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nev?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Hi.
Richard Fagundis.
Yes.
Five in favor. We approve it presented. Next item.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board at Hill Public Health. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Today, we are seeking your board's adoption of a resolution delegating the authority to contract for goods and services to the First Five Kings County Children and Families Commission. On December 29th, 1998, in accordance with Proposition 10, the Kings County Board of Supervisors, your board, adopted an ordinance establishing a County Children and Families First Commission known as the First Five Kings County Children and Families Commission, which administers programs authorized by the California Children and Families Act of 1998. Since that inception, the commission has entered into agreements allowing the commission to carry out the intent and requirements of the required strategic plans and administer the Prop 10 funding. In 2014, the First Five Kings County Program started operating as a division under the Kings County Department of Public Health, where they continue to engage and enter into agreements to meet the mission and the requirements of that program. In May of 2020, county council brought to the commission's attention that the commission was entering into agreements without proper delegated authority by your board. And according to the statute and local ordinances, the commission is an agency of the county and not a legal entity separate and apart from this county. Given this, and you may remember, the commission does not have independent legal authority to approve and execute its own contracts. And so with this information, the commission brought back all the agreements for fiscal year 19 and 20 for your board to retroactively approve on June 16th, 2020. And the agreements for fiscal year 2021 were brought before your board for approval on June 20th and July 28th, 2020. As you can imagine, the additional layer of approval creates a burden on staff, the commission, and the contracted providers, as items must be approved by council, the commission, which only meets once every two months, and then the Board of Supervisors. The commission is subject to oversight by First Five California, as well as the State Controller's Office, and is required to submit annual audits, report an annual audit, and to ensure programs supported by the local commission meets the statute requirements, as well as following the First Five Financial Management Guidelines. The oversight also includes an annual program evaluation by an outside independent organization, which also ensures adherence to the above-mentioned requirements and establish, excuse me, establish strategic plan. The commission is a diverse group made up of a member of the Board of Supervisors that is, seat is currently occupied by Supervisor Nev, the Kings County Human Services Agency Director, his or her designated, currently seated by Director Sonya Bougaye, Kings County Health Department, which is currently seated by Health Officer Milton Teske, the Kings County Behavioral Health Department, or his or her designated, which is currently seated by Dr. Lisa Lewis, and one member designated by the Board of Supervisors, which is currently being represented by a member from the school district, Mr. Todd Barlow, our county superintendent of schools. There are no county costs associated with this action. A copy of the resolution is on file with the clerk of the board for review, and the resolution has been reviewed and approved as to form by county council. Therefore, it's recommended that your board approve the adoption of the resolution delegating the authorities to contract for goods and services for the First Five Kings County Children and Families Commission. And this concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ed. Appreciate that. Any questions or comments?
Ms. Chair, I would like to talk about this item a little bit. I think there's a few misstatements in the resolution, as well as a couple of points of clarification. First Five California is dedicated to the improvement of life of California's young children, zero to five, and was adopted by the voter initiative. While the First Five Commission is in a unique position with the county, it's not advisory to the Board of Supervisors, nor should it be controlled by county interest. The commission's specific role is to address the zero to five population. I don't think, as far as the resolution, I don't think the commission delegated this. I think it was the county council's office that wanted instituted this action. I think this action is unneeded. I think while First Five is embedded in the Health Department and is included in the Kings County budget, as I said, it's a very unique position in that it doesn't need any oversight from the Kings County Board of Supervisors. I think that delegation was given by the voters in 1998, even though there's a little misleading in the staff report reverting back to some 1988 footnote. I really don't see this being needed. I think if anything, First Five should be declared an independent body, just as the housing authority. Many of the joint powers agreements that this county belongs to, whether it's CART, Association of Governments, Kings Waste and Recycling. And I'm very disappointed that it took six months for this to come before this board and have this discussion. This disruption in service has happened since May, and it's, you know, and I just think the resolution is poorly written and poorly produced.
What would your desire be today?
I think if this board does anything is to just take that first paragraph that was in the resolution. As it outlines, the voters of the State of California enacted the California Children's Family Act and codified in the Health and Safety. This First Five Commission has done everything else as far as financial audits, code of ordinances. This First Five Commission has done everything that it's supposed to do by state Controller's Office. There just seems to be an extension of power from county council's office. And, you know, and while there's no cost, there is kind of a cost, because county council charges for services. And so there's not a cost to the county for First Five, but it's a cost of First Five to the county.
Would you, do you still need council over this, or?
I would like to have independent counsel, because the previous three county councils that have had, that have been in office prior to the inception of First Five never had a problem. It's only been the last one. And even though I've tried to get independent counsel to get an independent opinion, it's been... Well, this is what's come up since trying to get independent counsel as to the standing of First Five.
And you're the chair of the First Five?
No.
Who's the chair?
Dr. Lewis.
Dr. Lewis. Dr. Lewis. Sonya, you were last time? So, yeah, it changes the last couple of times. You know, I just, I think this is, yeah, yeah. I think this just got way, way out of hand. I think the added level of bureaucracy to have to go through county council, as you said, on the Association of Governments with independent counsel and CART.
We had the same problem.
Exactly.
Yeah, so we separated it and acted it easier.
Exactly. And realizing that those are joint powers agreements that really didn't have county control. But I will submit for the record, I don't think the Commission, First Five Commission, should have any control or any even influence from the county council's office. We've recently separated out Kings Waste and Recycling for the same reasons. I think, I just think it's time to separate and make sure that the First Five Commission is an independent counsel, has independent counsel, realizing its independent status.
And how does the commission feel? I mean, so Sonya, you want to give a chime in on this, you think? Sonya, you want to give your five cents or two cents? All right, two cents inside.
Just talk loud.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, could I?
I was looking for a yes or no, but thank you.
Mr. Chair, could I provide some additional detail for the board's consideration?
Yes, I see Tran's up there writing notes.
The upshot of it is as Ms. Bougaye described. When First Five was passed, and then each county determined how they were going to set up their First Five Commission, they had two options under the law. One was to set it up as a legally separate entity that would have enumerated in the statute a variety of powers, including the ability to contract. The way Kings County set up their commission, and I have every reason to believe that this was probably an oversight or I can't speculate as to why council set it up this way, but they set it up at the equivalent of a department of the county. Under the government code, departments cannot contract on their own unless the board has delegated them the authority to do it. We discovered this. Three attorneys in my office have reviewed it. We're confident in the opinion that unfortunately, First Five has been operating as if it were a separate legal entity and not a department of the county. We urge them to bring their all outstanding pending operative contracts to the board, which they did in the June timeframe. And then they set out trying to figure out, well, what do we do about this? County council's office gave them three options. One was do nothing and continue now to bring your contracts to the board. The second one was get delegated authority from the board. Clearly, the board has not invested, has not suggested at any point in time that it distrusted the commission, that it thought it was un- that it distrusted the commission, that it thought, thought it was unable to contract independently. The, 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 the board of supervisors have given them, uh, implicitly the freedom to contract all of these years. So it seemed like getting delegated authority would be relatively easy because the board has no reason to distrust their inability to do it consistent with board policies or, or board direction. The third option we gave them was to come before the board and do a restructuring, a legal restructuring that would then allow them to, to, uh, operate independently as they thought they were allowed to under the law for all of these years. Uh, the county council issue about whether they can hire outside counsel, uh, i- is, uh, up to this board to determine on a contract specialized basis because under the government code, as a department, their, uh, their primary source for legal advice is the county council's office. And yes, county council's office does charge them and has since the beginning for county council services, as we do many other, uh, departments that operate with independent funding. It's just the way the county is set up and it's always done that way. It, it's not anything I did after getting here. Now, with that said, the commission voted to come to you and, and, uh, seek your delegation of contracting authority so that they can, for all intents and purposes, continue to operate the way they have in the past. County council's office doesn't have any skin in this game. If the board wants to restructure them so that they can contract for outside counsel services, we are more than happy to relinquish that responsibility. If the board wants to hire attorneys to give a specialized opinion on whether county council's opinion regarding the current structure of the first five commission, county council's office has no concern about that either. Uh, however, that motion has not been presented to the board today and would need to come back for that. Uh, but we, we support the commission in the action it's brought today. Uh, we think it's perfectly reasonable, given the way they've operated over time and would like to continue operating. And the board has never suggested any other reason to, uh, not give them delegated authority to do their own contract.
Thank you very much. Andy, do you wanna add anything to that or? You covered. Okay, supervisor Peterson.
Yeah, I, I guess, you know, from a procedural, um, point, seems like we're, we're kinda picking targets here. Um, from a procedural point, would it require a rewrite of the, the structural, um, delegations of the board and in doing that prior to, you know, making some sort of, of, uh, very quick decision on, on how, um, you know, structurally they are formed? And it just seems like we need to go back or they need to go back and rewrite the, the codes that, that, um, they operate under and clean this up and, and move on down the road. I'm sure county council has plenty to do. And, uh, this isn't, you know, out of the ordinary for, um, you know, all the boards that we sit on and, and, uh, you know. I, I, I just, just a question procedurally, I mean, are we just being asked this question today or is this something that needs to go back and be rewritten into the operating, um, procedural, uh, code of, of first five?
It is, it is up to this board as to how you want it structured, just as it was from day one when this board set up the first five commission. Uh, we have no opinion on what is best for the first five commission. Uh, procedurally, they considered whether to come to the board and ask for authority to restructure and present the, the, and it would be like the Articles of Incorporation and the bylaws would need to be restructured in order to give them the independence of the county. Uh, and so we would be happy to assist them with that. They voted not to. A majority of the board voted not to and instead to come before the board and seek delegated authority. If the board, however, wanted to direct them to, to, uh, come forward in the future with the documents necessary to restructure to ensure their independence, then we would certainly work with them to do that as well. Uh, I can tell you their commission voted not to, but I'm sure they would defer to the board if the board wanted it, uh, a, a different way.
So from the historical perspective, why? Why did you vote no?
I, I do genuinely think that we are feeling a little bit stuck. So from the, what we have used to, the, the question of structure just never came up before. It came with a, um, issue of passing a contract and whether a particular contract needed to go to the board of supervisors. We have always, um, or I have perceived some oversight from board of supervisors through the first five commission because we do bring a budget. When we changed our bylaws, we struggled with filling seven seats. We restructured the commission to have five. That came to the board of supervisors. So we have traditionally taken some items to the board of supervisors. And yet, so knowing that the board then appoints the commission, those kind of pieces. What was the challenge, um, that kind of started this entire conversation was the contracting, the contracting for a particular service and whether that contract, a, um, chair of the commission can sign versus that that agreement needed an oversight from the board of supervisors. Um, we can't, it didn't seem like we could actually even vote to, um, restructure ourselves. And so personally, I don't know if we, these conversations ended up being broader, but my concern was, um, on the, what, what the implication of being completely outside of the county might have on the retirement, if, if the employees of the first five aren't employees of, so there's, there's broader impacts of being structured completely differently. Really, the, kind of the fastest, the most expedient, um, resolution was this one, which would be, we want our contracting authority back because it is, um, to supervisors Neves' point, this taking as long as it did impacted our services. The service of the contracting, what can we contract with, does it need to be redone if it's an extension? So that struggle of the services we, the funding we deliver to community-based organizations who then deliver the services and then whether we are, it, so every time that now came up, there were questions that, uh, probably, given the supervisor Neves is, is the most experienced commissioner, would raise the questions that then we struggled with, like, are we then doing the right thing? So the, this step, this particular motion is the most expedient one to get us back to operating the way we operated, but now technically not ignoring your authority over the commission. Uh, because we would, you would have delegated that authority, we have it. I, whether the larger thing needs to be explored or not, we weren't necessarily on the same page as a commission and we didn't explore all the other issues. To me, this would get us back to the, the way we've operated and that seemed to be sufficient for now.
Yeah, it just sounds like, you know, we wanna change it, you know, and I'll use this, it's not, um, being pointed, but I, you want your cake and you wanna eat it too. We have employees that have historically been treated a way maybe wrong and, um, we just want it to be changed. And unfortunately, you know, with the law and the way that, that council has, has found, um, that this was originally written, it needs to be cleaned up. And, uh, so I don't know if this board can encourage, um, you know, that process to take place, sounds like it needs to and, and I have no, no quarrel with that, but, um, I don't think we can just change one portion of it and then we end up poking ourselves in the eye again and going through this over the next issue that isn't, um, concurrent with the code of, um, you know, the, the, the operating procedures. And, and it just seems like instead of, you know, creating a patch, we ought to fix this correctly and, and be done with it.
So may I, um, so that, this is county council, when they produce an opinion, um, we don't have the power based on county council to even request an outside opinion. So that's the, because that goes back to the power to contract, right? So this was one of the options the county council provided to us. There were three options. It seems least costly and the most effective one, that we would still benefit from the overall county structure as a first five commission and yet have the authority to expeditiously, um, deliver services. Your board delegates authority to contract to, under certain circumstances, to the CAO, delegates the con, to purchasing. It really is that, that we're asking, is there, um, should that delegation occur with the first five commission? We could go back and grapple with the issue of a separate structure. It, that is just a law, I, I think that issue would require more, um, investigation of what that would truly mean, uh, from charges to the first five commissions to the employees. It's similar to public authority board, like any of these boards, how they're set up because we've grappled with the same thing there. Part of the, but while we are in that limbo, I suppose, then what, how we are proceeding then is to bring every service and every contract back or we are just on a pause and the pause is what worried us, uh, because then we're, we're, we're negatively impacting services. That's the bottom one. We're trying to not negatively impact services if we're, if we're going back for additional period of time. That's the worry.
Yeah, and I appreciate you're not trying to impact services, but, but the reality is that there's, you know, an opinion that, um, you know, this, this thing needs to be cured and, and I, I, if, if there's an ability to patch it and cure it, um, today, then we can, uh, I, I would certainly support, um, doing that. But, uh, but again, I, I think, you know, no one can look beyond the law and no one can look beyond the operating procedures that were developed, um, and approved by the county and, and to, you know, try and just pick and choose, um, you know, I don't think is the appropriate way to, um, fix a problem. And, and, uh, I, I think that, um, you know, I, I'm, I'm supportive of, of what I'm hearing. I'm just, I think we need to get it done and, and so, you know, from your board, um, and the willingness to engage in that. And then secondly, um, with respect to cost of counsel, that's probably fairly marginal, I guess, monthly meetings and, you know, specific issues and that's well within the budget of, of first five.
First five is part of the county cost wide allocation plan. So all county services, so county council, finance, um, any, any service that's the countywide government service gets allocated to first five the way it does to every other department, HSA, like all the countywide services that we all benefit from, whether you're a department like Human Services Agency or First Five Commission or Sheriff's Office or behavioral health. It all gets allocated evenly or on whatever allocation methodology those of us with third party funding contribute to that through your cost, county, countywide cost allocation plan. So that's first five gets in that way treated similar to any other department.
Great. Well, I guess, um, did you have a motion on the floor?
There is no, no motion pending.
Okay. Um, well, at this point, I guess I would just, um, offer, uh, a motion to.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm still talking. I'd still like to make another statement.
I'm just gonna make a motion and then you can talk all you want. Um, so at this point, to fix the scenario that's occurred, I would encourage this board to support, um, you know, the patch to create your fix in the short term and then clean up the regulations and the operating procedures and just clean it up so that we don't have to deal with this.
Well, Mr. Chair, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, you, you know, the first five commission is in a unique position. It wasn't, um, created by the voters, um, and it, and it should be independent from, from council, um, and independent, uh, it, it has adopted all of the county policies, principles, everything is outlined by the initiative. It has maintained that for the last quarter century. That's all been done. Um, the authority and creation of first five, um, shouldn't be, shouldn't be subject to local control. Um, they serve a zero to five population, not to augment county funding, but to supplement the, the, the services to zero to five children. First five commission should be very independent. Um, it should have granting authority and it shouldn't have granting authority by the board of supervisor. Um, the board of supervisors through the budget process, even though the first five commission creates its own budget, follows its own budget protocols, is part of the county finance, it's part of everything that it's supposed to do, um, except this delegated of authority. We, we by extension do that by approving the budget. We approve the county first five commission through the budget process to write those contracts and make sure that they follow the state first five commission's guidelines and policies. And we've done that for 25 years. It's only been since May that we've had an issue. And I, I really don't think that this is, you know, um, a, a needed process. Um, even on our own state, uh, even on our own county, uh, webpage, we, we identify first five commission as an outside agency. Um, council continues to, and I don't know what the difference is between an agency and a department, but the first five commission is not a department of Kings County. It is an agency of Kings County. Um, it has independent authority. Um, and I think that, that independent legal council, uh, should be established just as, again, for, uh, the, um, uh, CART, Association of Governments and, and all of the other entities that we've separated out of.
We've had this discussion with KCG. I know I'm part of that.
Correct.
Even in 26 years, so as a, as a senior board member of a, of association, you gotta give him some credit. He's been paying from his eyes as a board member.
And I agree. I haven't, I didn't hear him say anything that I just said.
Right.
Well, you support the delegation of the authority and that's the biggest problem that I have. I don't think the board of supervisors have any delegation of authority over the first five commission that the voters didn't give them in 1998. I, I, I think that delegation of authority was done, it was through the Prop 10 process of the election of 1998. And I don't think this board of supervisors has that ability 25 years later to do that.
But we can change this, we can vote today, made a motion if we wanna get outside counsel for, uh, first five. I know, well, we are a KCG with the worst experience I've ever had. It cleared up a lot of problems.
Oh, yes.
A lot of contentious, uh, problems at that time. Nothing was getting done and we got outside counsel and the problem was all solved. Everything went away. We stopped having audiences, uh, people stopped complaining, uh, nothing against county council that we had at the time. It just didn't work. And, uh, you know, we had so many people in there on the board. So, uh, I respect the, the supervisor Neves's opinion, uh, nothing against our county council. I know they put a lot of work into it, but we have a problem with agency and things are getting done, why have an agency? Nothing getting done. Once you offend one board member, uh, it just kind of trickles down and pretty soon, uh, people don't start showing up for meetings, people start getting off the board and you gotta, you gotta listen to that person. Uh, if anybody wants to make a motion to move forward.
Mr. Chair, you already have a motion pending.
Yeah, I'd like to add a comment.
We have, I don't remember who made the motion.
Mr. Peterson, Supervisor Peterson.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, question.
I thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just, uh, trying to follow along, uh, on the conversation. I appreciate all the, uh, input on it from around and on, and on the dials. I guess just to get to the point, um, I'd like, I'd like to ask, uh, Supervisor Neves if the motion of Supervisor Peterson, uh, in his opinion requires any modifications or are you comfortable with, with the, uh, agenda, uh, with, not the agenda, I'm sorry, with the motion is presented?
Yeah, no, I'm not. Um, I, I, I think, uh, this board to delegate authority, that I don't think it has. Um, again, I think the voters in, in 19898, um, gave that, um, authority to the.
Yes, sir.
First five commission, um, as a standing agency and not as a department.
Thank, thank you for adding that, Supervisor Neves. I appreciate that 'cause all I'm trying to do, I think I'm trying to get to where you're at, Mr. Chairman. I think, uh, um, sometimes if, uh, if we just implement a little bit more of the, uh, the protocol where, you know, we had a board member who asked to keep the discussion going, is there's a time when the chair calls to that, the chair will entertain any motions and, and not allow any motions until you feel the discussion's over. So because it, it went that way and I respect that Supervisor Peterson made a motion, okay, it's out there. But, I mean, I'm open to keeping the discussion going and, and any, um, and if you're, uh, able to entertain any other motions to see if, uh, another motion would get a second to, to keep the conversation going or to get to a decision.
Vice Peterson, clarify your motion again, simple like in one sentence.
If I could.
Thirty years of history, that's a little difficult to put in, but, but, uh,
to allow, uh, the commission to seek, uh, outside counsel and to, um, if, if council believes there is, um, uh, insufficient, um, clarity in the, uh, operating oversight of, of, uh, of the organization by the county, then to, to define, you know, to clarify that and, and to be done with, with a discussion about. And I, I'm sorry, that's not, I'm missing a sentence, but, uh.
If we, if I could help, uh, my understanding of the original motion was to approve the delegation of authority and to restructure first five to be an independent commission, which would then give it its own contracting authority, including the hiring of outside counsel. As it currently stands now, under the government code, this board can approve one contract for outside counsel. Well, you can approve many, but the purpose would have to be for a special service. The service could be to review county council's opinion. You could pay money to get a second opinion regarding the current structure of first five. But if you were interested in moving forward, uh, you could delegate the authority in order to allow them to continue to do their contracting and you could direct them to, to restructure their organization. So it's independent, much like they thought they were operating for all these years. The danger of assuming that they have delegated power or authority to contract, if they don't, is that every single contract is void under the law and the county would have the duty to go back and collect all the funds expended. So there is a huge risk associated with assuming they have delegated authority when they don't. And maybe, maybe what this board does is it approves the, the, the ability for them to go out and get a specialized legal opinion on the issue of their current structure. That is certainly within the realm of your authority as well.
So if we gave, if we gave them the authority to seek, um, counsel, I mean, is that something that we need to do?
That, uh, my view is no. I think you have a legitimate legal opinion. There's a way to effect the outcome that, that Supervisor Nev's would like to see. Denying the current legal status is probably the riskiest way to go, but that certainly is within your authority as well.
Yeah, I, I'm just trying, trying to find, uh, a happy medium here that, that allows, uh, for their operation. And so thinking about, um, if you gave them the authority to contract or if we gave them the authority to contract with, with counsel, outside counsel and step back and the weight then transfers to their shoulders and their counsel to provide that, that legal opinion, um, to their board on their actions. And then it removes us from the, uh, requirements, so to speak. And I get, you say that, you know, we, that this is in the, in some sort of, uh, statute somewhere that was created and, uh, I think we need to get, we, we need to get somewhere here. And, uh, I'm just not sure how to get there, I guess.
The, the, the one thing that's missing from that approach is the delegation of contract authority. If you don't delegate today, then they have to keep bringing their contracts back and, and getting board approval, uh, until the time that they are restructured or they get their additional legal opinion or you act further. So delegating authority and then allowing them to contract for outside council services regarding the structure would allow them to continue operating in a timely fashion until the board can revisit it later if necessary.
Previous three county councils plus, uh, contract county council over the last 25 years have had a different opinion. Um, and that's the part that I wrestle. I now have to get a second opinion because of one county council, even though we've had four legal councils over the last two and a half decades that have, um, approved the operation the way it was. We have 24 audits from the state of California and the state comptroller's office that we have done everything correctly. We have one individual, um, that doesn't agree with it and wants to change it. And I think that's the problem.
There are actually three attorneys in county council's office, county council, assistant county council and a deputy county council who initially identified it. And I have been unable to locate any other legal opinion from county council's office regarding this issue. So the fact that they allowed it to continue could have been on the basis that they were uninformed or that they otherwise didn't understand the process. I won't speculate as to why it's been allowed to go on so long. Um, but I will say that it's clear that it needs to be corrected.
Because of, because of liability?
Not because of liability, but I think to, uh, uh, allay the concerns that have happened over the past few months. Uh, it needs to be corrected either through a delegation of authority so that they can contract with the board's approval or the contracts need to come here for approval on a case by case basis. The liability supervisor would arise if we ignore the current structure and then allow them to continue to contract inconsistent with the law.
Okay, well then, question through the chair to council is, on a scale of one through 10, what's the priority level here to get this done? If it's been going on this long and other councils before you, what's the priority level?
I would say the priority level is, depending on how you said it, one through 10 with 10 being the highest.
Yeah.
Uh, I think if we were to ignore the legal structure and go back to allowing them to contract the way they were, um, without board approval and without board delegation, I'd say that's a 10.
Okay.
Uh.
Cause in the bigger picture, the way I'm looking at it here and listening to the discussion is if it's been going on this long, and I'm also trusting a veteran status here, uh, and the, uh, the, the fact of everything that was laid out from Soup Nev's and, and prior councils not having an issue with it, that my priority level is we're in the middle of a pandemic. We have other things to be talking about. Uh, people are getting sick, people are dying. So when I look at it that way, in my opinion, it's, it's not high priority. I'd like to move on down the agenda to get some, more of the other priority issues that are waiting for us to do. That being said, it's on the agenda. We ought to respect the conversation. So without muddying up the waters and trying to keep an open mind, I still have to see from hearing the discussion that this is a trend that has been happening lately where other things are being opened up and picked apart. And why do that right now? Do we have that much time on our hands? We are in the middle of a worldwide pandemic. No matter how you think about it politically or where you stand, it's here. It's affecting us. This shouldn't even be on the agenda today. I, I, if, if this isn't a motion that Soup Nev's approves of, uh, to his respect to the veteran status and if, if the board wants to move forward on that, then, then I'll, that's a no vote on, on my end because I'd, I'd rather get somewhere. I'd rather get somewhere to keep, if it's not broke, don't fix it. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Once again, Ms. Chair, uh, actions don't reflect words. Um, if, if this was a 10, uh, this has been going on for six months. Next week will be six months. We, we first brought this to the attention in May. Um, here, here we are, the last week of November. Um, and yes, yet it's supposed to be a 10 as far as, uh, importance. I think Supervisor Valley's correct. This isn't a high priority. Um, it should have been resolved in May. Here we are, December, um, and, and, and this, the, actions do not reflect the words of county council.
Okay, so at, at this point, we can make a motion and prove it and come back to your board and, um, change it, come back again within six months? Or we can table this or just it dies lack of a second?
Yeah, I, it doesn't do any good to take it to first five because they don't have, they're, they're getting legal, um, legal, uh, advice from county council's office and they just cheat and they just keep running us in circles. Um, this, this needs to be resolved at this level. And the first five commission, again, I, in my opinion, has independent counsel given by, given by the voters.
And we have a motion. I know. And, uh, do we have a second?
I'm sorry, what was the motion?
Yeah, I asked for one sentence, but I got like four.
Well, if it's been painted up easier than this mess, then I guess.
We tried, we did it twice.
Okay, motion, uh, no second?
Go with this. Outside council, which is.
You tried two times, sir.
I give it that much.
Ends up back at the other one, so I'm, I'm lost. I only got my IQ is like 84.
No, I, 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 I mean, I, I think I've stated, I, I, I don't agree. I mean, I don't disagree with anything that, that, um, Supervisor Nev has said. And I respect his, his, um, you know, commitment to the county and to the, to the first five commission and, and being here a long time. I also respect legal opinion, law actually. She does this stuff every day and there's laws on the books for a reason. And clarity is a good thing. But if we don't want clarity, then let's just move on.
Supervisor Peterson, one option would be to table this and allow county council to bring you our legal opinion. You can evaluate it on your own and then choose a course of action. We could put this on for December 8th. Uh, I feel you're, you're, um, lacking important information in the level of detail that you deserve in order to make an informed decision.
Well, I think what I, what I said is I respect Supervisor Nev's opinion. He's got 26 years here. Uh, he's been on his commission since it started.
No, no, I, I, I'm the third. Supervisor Barbara started it and then Supervisor Taylor was on there. Then I, I got put on it to clean up the mess.
Okay, well, I think I did, but you know, his, his opinion, he has been here a long time. He does, he does understand it. I know that I went through this with K C A G and it was a hassle and I'm seeing it through those eyes. Uh, I think we should table this and bring it back with a, a, a better legal opinion. And, uh, also maybe a possible outside counsel to take it over.
Well, and it needs to be independent counsel, not somebody the county council selects.
No, I, I fully agree.
She tried that with the, um, part of equalization with the La Prino and I, I, I still think that that was totally wrong. Um, but, you know, and, and here it is trying to.
Well, do I have a second for the, I'm going to ask, we table title, bring it back to December 8th?
In December, my opinion, December 8th isn't a rush day. I mean, go after, uh, Valentine's Day or St. Patrick's Day.
Can we do business as usual up till then?
We're gonna have to because we got a meeting December 1st. So yeah, no, it's, this, it's gonna extend out another six months, you know? It's just unfortunate we have to operate.
The exposure to the contract may be out there, but, uh, you can ratify that at the end, right?
Yeah, there won't be any exposure to contracts. In essence, you'll be telling first five to bring their contracts to you for approval until you make a decision on whether to delegate authority or continue to approve their contracts or restructure them to be truly an independent, uh, commission.
Yeah, I have a motion table. No second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second, I see much for goodness. Matt, of course, please call all.
And, and unfortunately, a motion to table needs a deadline. When do you want it back? Supervisor Valley has suggested after the first of the year. I suggested December 8th. It's up to you, but the motion to table needs a, a deadline to return.
Have you got a meeting December 1st? You think the 8th is soon, too soon or you want to go later?
We, we go every other month, so if you don't do it in December, you, you got till February.
Okay, so bring it back by February?
Yeah, cause, yeah, it, it, like I say, December 1st, and this has been hanging, hanging out there since May.
That Wednesday, that's enough time, holidays, this is due till February.
Yeah, you know, cause, yeah, and I, I'd really rather have the attorney general do it rather than a, uh, attorney, um, you know, that county council selects because I, I, I don't.
April, no longer have that. It's just due April.
Yeah.
You deal with that, first your second? Matt, of course, please call all.
I'm sorry, did you say April?
Yeah.
You wanted to come back in April?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
You're only gonna have December 1st, February 1st, April 1st.
Okay, so, um, the first meeting in April is April 6th.
Go next.
Yes.
Richard Golly.
Hi.
Doug Verben.
Yes.
Ted Peterson.
Hi.
Richard Verben, yes.
Yes.
Okay, five in favor of table. We'll move on now to the next item. And here's item D, human services agency, uh, Sonya Begay. Sonya's in the audience. Microphone has batteries in it, all yours.
Okay, can you, I just want to make sure you can hear me. Can you hear me?
Clear, you fine.
Okay, all right. And Brenda will operate the presentation. So I'm back with the Stardust Affordable Housing Project. Next slide. I just want to briefly remind your board of the project timeline. So on August 4th, we had a consensus, um, approval for your board, from your board to, uh, for, to the apply, to apply for state funding. We submitted the application to the state on August 8th. On, uh, October 9th, we had reservation notification by the state. We then had three board action. October 20th, um, you appointed me a negotiator for this property. On October 27th, uh, you approved the real estate broker agreement. And then, um, on November 10th, uh, we, you approved an authorizing resolution and acceptance of funds. That action was necessary in order for us to move from a reservation, um, notification to the award notification. On November 12th, we've been notified by the state that we were in award status. Next slide. So today, um, we have three recommendations, uh, in front of your board to approve the purchase of the Stardust Motel, to authorize, um, me to complete the documentation, to complete that purchase and to adopt the budget change, which is a 4th vote. Um, however, prior to that, I wanted to share the community outreach and feedback, um, that we went through during the past week and change and also give K C A O, because this would be a partnership with K C A O, give K C A O an opportunity to share that, what that partnership would look like from operating this property. Next slide. Um, we have had, just from the commu, conversation with the community, a little bit of, um, challenge about the, where the property is and which particular motel we're talking about. And we have invited the community in our letter to attend this board meeting. So how many people are listening? I'm not sure. So I wanted to, just to do a brief reminder that this is Stardust Motel that's located in 8595 Lacy Boulevard. It is an existing structure of 22 hotel rooms and a 1,015 square foot, three bedroom apartment. That it's also acts as a lobby. It's half a mile west of Costco and two mile east of downtown. And at the moment, the transportation services came up a lot, um, has on-demand cart services. Next slide. And next three slides, we can go through them fairly quickly, are just the pictures of what the property looks like currently. All right, so our community outreach was, um, based on your board's request, um, thousand feet, um, radius from the property. That reached 206, we mailed out 216 letters, um, to neighboring residents and businesses. Uh, we provided three ways of providing feedback. One was we provided an email, um, that can be, that was monitored, that people can email questions, concerns, anything really. Uh, we had a WebEx community meeting on the 19th. And I do want to thank Erin and I T for helping us navigate that, um, after hours. That was, that was great, thank you. Um, and then we also informed people in the, via the letter and during the community meeting about your board's meeting today, that this, so, and followed up with a couple that asked about exactly how to access, um, this meeting and the ability to address you today. We, because this all was transpiring in a past week and a half, we did some community canvassing. Had staff on a couple of days, go out, knock on people's doors and basically present them a copy of the letter and let them know. Through those, uh, through that outreach effort, we ended up having, um, some conversations with the, with the community members that were probably lengthier than anything that happened actually during the community meeting. Um, in addition, and some of the initial questions and concerns in the conversations, we then upfront addressed during the community meeting. We, I also did a presentation to Hanford City Council. And while this portion of this presentation was about Stardust, it really was also, um, engaging the council on the larger issue of homelessness and other projects that are happening. So that was, um, that was actually a genuinely a good conversation because we do need to partner on some of these projects more closely. Um, as a result of that presentation, the Hanford City Council, um, sent a letter of support for this project to your board. Uh, we also, um, had a, um, our director of J T O's office facilitated a conversation with, uh, Chamber of Commerce for both Hanford and the larger Kings County. our director of J T O's office facilitated a conversation with, uh, Chamber of Commerce for both Hanford and the larger Kings County Chamber of Commerce to answer questions, um, and really their questions and concerns from the business side of the community in the neighborhood. And we did that on, well, the twentieth, so that was last Friday, and actually, um, had support from both, uh, from Hanford, uh, Hanford, um, Chamber of Commerce intended to send a letter, their board supported it, intended to send a letter. But what I got this morning, um, was an email basically conveying their support. I don't think they, they did not have a chance to actually finalize the letter. Um, through the next slide. So in the both conversation, direct conversation with, um, constituents. And i- in the community meeting, there were, there were themes of what came up, so I wanted to give you a little bit of detail on that. Um, security, um, and ongoing security of the site, um, ended up, um, coming up as an issue. I do, um, want to share that really the understanding of what is actually happening with Stardust currently, what has happened before and what we're proposing, we gained that clarity through, through these conversations and the co- and understanding of the community for that. Um, transportation and insufficient access to transportation to this entire area came up multiple times. Actually, it's the one that came up most frequently. And I do want to publicly, um, thank Angie Dow because, because of that, we reached out to her. She attended a community meeting and then reached out to individual residents that really brought this up as an issue to follow up, gain some clarity and address that. And we have the commitment that we would partner and look at the transportation needs across the community because that one really stood out, interestingly enough, more than anything else. Exterior maintenance of the site and property management came up as a concern. I will tell you in individual conversations with the residents, the initial maintenance of concerns weren't really about Stardust. It ended up being different motels. But that as a concern about trash and exterior maintenance and maintaining the property well was a, um, came up as an issue. So was the property fencing, though it with the resident where property fencing came up, it again turned out not to be Stardust. Um, need for employment services and supportive services, not just, um, so that was a seen as a positive of county's presence and provide provision of services. And in, um, we received the letter from, um, Kit Carson Elementary and unpacking what that need is. The real, the concern was if this property becomes, uh, where, somewhere where we house families, there is an impact to the school. So how would we address school needs? We've actually reached out to Kit Carson Elementary because regardless of what the decision is, um, related to Stardust future, I do think better partnering on access to services from our agencies needed. So we're in process of setting that up and have a commitment with, from K C A O that we would approach that jointly, again, regardless of what really happens with Stardust. Um, there were questions on impact of Lacy widening both ways. What's the impact on the property? And would there be impact on that project happening if this, um, if this particular, uh, purchase is approved? And there's also impact, questions related to property values. Next slide. I want to address the affordable housing project's impact on housing prices in neighborhoods because this is the one where we provided some answers, but I don't know that we actually addressed as well as we could have during the meeting. We have on the questions that we couldn't answer during community meeting, um, really followed up with the residents to, once we did some additional research to, um, address the issues. So I do want to share that long-term studies show that low-income housing has really no impact on nearby home values. The impact of this particular project and how it's structured is that realtors, appraisers, economic analysts say the capital investment, so improvement of the property is actually, uh, regardless of the population group, increases overall. Uh, it, it's a positive impact on the neighborhood. Because of the infusion of capital and structural improvements to the property is a neighborhood benefit. The impact of this particular project and Home Key is that currently, and this is, this ended up being in most of our con- our conversations with residents that live and with the businesses that are there, that currently, and really what has happened in this particular motel. Anyone with any background or activity can rent rooms. What Home Key brings, so the key difference here is that Home Key brings social services from my agency and services to stabilize households and ensure that we can really, um, but we, we bring services and the purchase of the property and having K C A on site brings the, um, tenancy rules. It's going to be a long-term, um, long-term rentals as opposed to a, a transient use the way the tr- the transient use has been a tradition for this motel and is what's happening currently. The other piece that part of our application and why, uh, this isn't a traditional affordable housing project is it normally stay, doesn't require security and robust staffing and that piece of it, that wasn't requirement in this project. And one that we, that is how we applied. And actually, part of the award is getting, uh, so while no, while purchase and conversion expenditures that Home Key would pay for is through the end of December, the staffing piece of it and the support services, we have a two-year award. Now, our agency isn't going to keep any of that funding for the two-year maintenance services, we would be passing it all to K C A O. But we actually got operational funds for that second piece of it. Um, next slide. So because of those nuances, I wanted to differentiate how Stardust was used previous to July twenty twenty, what the current use is, and then the proposed use. So how Stardust was utilized prior to twenty twenty is daily room rentals to the public, really anybody who would pay cash for a room rental or credit card. Um, we, the motel was also utilized as a long, longer-term rentals to low-income residents. When we were initially leasing this, um, facility, they had three residents who were using the facility as a, um, basically, that, that's where they were living, they just had a longer-term agreement to rent rooms. The rest of them were daily rental. And then county programs, ours, others, so for homeless and justice-involved population, the county, different programs, different agencies would rent rooms. That one key piece here is there were no county services on site and no security services on site. What changed once we, um, negotiated for the entire agreement, what changed with COVID is we were still using it, so we're still using it for tran- currently for transient population. We're doing daily room rentals for vulnerable homeless population. It is homeless, um, not justice-involved, it just is one program that we are contracting for, uh, to prevent the spread of COVID. The difference between this current agreement is we have onsite supportive services. So whole person care staff is onsite, so is my staff. And we have twenty-four hour security. We also have food and laundry and additional sanitation services. In every agencies we partnered with, including sheriff's office and including the hard team from the, um, Hanford Police Department, we have had a positive impact. We have absolutely, even in the current use, that is not that different from previous use, we have had a positive impact on crime. And we have had a positive impact on law enforcement. Part of the reason why Chief Sever sent a support letter is there, his team, our team has experienced that, so has our sheriff's office. When we look at the, um, severity of calls and frequency of calls, because we have twenty-four hour security on site, that has been a positive impact. And we have not changed the use that drastically, at least not a portion of this institution. What we are proposing is not this. So this, what we're currently doing is shelter, we're not proposing shelters. Next slide. What this would turn into, we would lose this site as a shelter. We would purchase the motel. With Home Key funds, we're not allowed to use it as a shelter, so I, I do want to be clear about that. We absolutely need a shelter, I will be back to talk about shelter because we need that, um, as a, as a solution. But this is not it. We, we applied and received the funds for permanent housing. So we would purchase the motel, we would transfer ownership to K C A O. We would need to convert the rooms into apartments, which means upgrades, we need kitchens and upgrade the facility to meet the, uh, meet the basically apartment complex building code. We have committed to making the three of these rooms ADA accessible. We would also do some exterior improvements. Parking is one that we definitely don't need, that current, um, sixteen stalls don't meet the need, so we, we definitely need to address that. Uh, lighting and, uh, probably fencing. Um, the piece that's different that an app, so average out there apartment complex does not come equipped with our services, but part of the commitment through Home Key funds is that piece of it. H S A would provide onsite supportive services, which is employment services, linkage to case management, linkage to behavioral health or any other ser- service. We would, in that respect, replicate the model that we have found works well under Room Key. And K C A O would provide onsite property management. What we would end up with is twenty-two new affordable housing units. Next slide. And Jeff, I think this is you. Next slide, Brenda.
From K C A, an opportunity to share with you just that.
Good morning supervisors and staff. My name is, uh, Jeff Garner with, uh, Kings Community Action Organization, I'm the executive director. And, uh, thank you for having me here this morning. So let me first kind of help set the table in terms of, of why we are involved in this, uh, project. So, uh, two years ago, uh, we did, well, I'm sorry, in two thousand nineteen, we did a community needs assessment. And, uh, in doing that needs assessment, we were able to identify a lot of needs, uh, locally for low-income individuals. And one of the needs that ranked the highest was for affordable housing. Uh, I think it was close to the second or third highest need that we had identified. But also, we see, uh, the need for affordable housing, actually through our rapid rehousing program that we operate as well, where we place individuals into apartments or housing units. And we struggle to find landlords, we struggle to find units to place individuals in. And, um, so we've seen it from both sides, we've seen it directly from, um, low-income individuals, but we've also seen it as, uh, administrators of housing programs and really the lack of inventory that we have here in Kings County for, for affordable housing. So when this project came forward, we saw, you know, the direct benefit that we need more affordable housing here in Kings County. And so this seemed to be a good opportunity to add to the inventory and to create a sustainable program that will be able to help, um, our local community. So let me go into a little bit of details about our agency, if we can go to the next slide, please. So probably a lot of this, uh, you already know, but let me just go through it just to, uh, either refresh your memory or, or add on to it. Um, but we are a private nonprofit organization, we were established in nineteen sixty-five. Um, I can actually have great appreciation for the conversation you had regarding first five because it was actually through the county that, uh, gave us the, uh, private status. Um, and, uh, that came back in nineteen sixty, uh, seven, so a little bit of a quick history lesson there, so thank you for that. But we, we've had the opportunity of serving the communities of Kings County since nineteen sixty-five. Our services has, has transformed as, as, as long as, you know, as well as the community has transformed. And so we try to develop our programs, administer our services to meet the direct needs of our community. Uh, we operate over fifty different programs, uh, here in Kings County. And, uh, we have a, a large family of services, including our food bank, our permanent supportive housing program, which I mentioned before. We provide subsidized childcare assistance, uh, to over a thousand families. We also, uh, operate, uh, our Head Start Centers, uh, which we have, uh, fourteen throughout the county. And we also help individuals with utility assistance, weatherization. Uh, and then we also operate the Barbara Seville Shelter, which we've been operating since nineteen eighty-three. And then we also have two hundred and fifty employees, uh, fifteen, or five hundred, uh, dedicated volunteers, which includes our parents, uh, who are part of our Head Start Child Development Program. And we operate over twenty, or twenty-two service locations in Kings County. Next slide, please. In terms of our related experiences as it relates to this program, uh, we do have experience. Uh, let me first start with, um, coming into the community and serving as a positive anchor. And that example came through our after-school program that we did for youth, as well as a summer program at Co Park. So we knew Co Park, uh, based on what the city of Hanford was sharing with us. They were just having struggles there with, um, uh, folks coming into the park and, and doing activities that weren't beneficial for the community. And so by us having a presence there and doing an after-school program, doing, um, a program during the summer, the city shared with us that they saw that part of the community transform while we were there and really pushing out that negative activity, knowing that we were having that positive influence there. And so I feel like with this project, uh, here with, uh, with the conversion of the motel to an apartment complex, I feel like we can have that same impact. Also, um, our, our Mona Learning Center, which we recently purchased, uh, that was our, our last, um, building that was purchased. So that's a childcare facility that we've been operating the last couple of years. I know supervisor Peterson was able to take a tour of the facility. And so there's a picture there, uh, there in the middle, where, uh, as part of our, uh, new presence in that part of the community, we held a community resource fair and really trying to make and, and build bridges with the, the local neighbors to share our story and to share what we are here to do in that part of the community. And we do plan to do the same thing for this new project, um, on East Lacy. And, uh, the last example is we do, uh, we, well, since the mid nineteen eighties, we have owned and operated three condos. Uh, they're located on, uh, Greenfield Street in Hanford. And we have served as the owner and operator of those condos with the purpose of providing, uh, low, low-income housing for individuals, and we've had, you know, a lot of success with that program. You know, we do try to keep those units full, which we've, I think done a really good job with that. But knowing that we're in this complex and there's other neighbors around, other businesses, we understand our responsibility to make sure that we are good neighbors and that we're doing our part to keep, um, I guess really keep a low profile, um, when it comes to making sure that our tenants are following the rules and regulations of this complex, as well as there's a, like a housing authority, uh, or, uh, an H A, H S A that's part of that complex. Next slide, please. So in terms of our involvement here, um, so first off, you know, I, we think it's important that we start to turn the page from the Stardust Motel to the new name for this complex. If, if adopted here, uh, we would call it the Sunrise Apartments. And, uh, each tenant that would be housed at the Sunrise Apartments would have their own individual lease agreements. There would be rules and regulations set forward in that lease agreement. And we would make sure that those individuals are applying to the, the rules and the, the regulations that we set forward. Also, we would require that each tenant pays rent and stays up to date on the rent. And that would be one of those requirements as part of the lease agreements. If those, um, if the, if the monthly rent isn't, uh, complied with or activities aren't followed, uh, based on the lease agreements, then we would move forward, um, in, in, in moving those clients, uh, out of the, the apartment complex. But, you know, we definitely know that these individuals, uh, that we'll be working with, you know, they, they have a, a, a past that, that definitely shouldn't determine their future. So we will do our very best to make sure that they stay in those units. But again, if they don't follow the rules and regulations, then we will set forward in finding new tenants. Then we will have a live-in, um, onsite management, um, or supervisor, um, that will be living in one of the units and they'll be able to provide onsite, uh, management and support for the, uh, location. And we'll contract with a security firm that will be there to provide, uh, security as well. Then, um, as Sonya said, we have reached out to CART and they've been a really good partner here. There is on-demand services right now, but they said if activity does pick up to where there's more of a need for a bus stop, then they will move forward in, uh, helping to get that installed. And then, um, as we mentioned kind of in our past experience with our, our Mona Learning Center, we will hold quarterly, uh, neighborhood meetings because we do want to hear from the community. We want to hear, um, ways that we can enhance the operations, take, uh, address any concerns that are coming from the community. So we will hold quarterly meetings, uh, with the neighborhood to make sure that we are hearing any concerns. And the last item on there is, we understand as owner and operator that, you know, with property, uh, you can build equity with property. We understand that, uh, not only on the equity side, um, in terms of the financial, but also with just good relationships in the community. We understand the importance of keeping up properties, making sure that they have a, a, a look to them that is pleasing to the community and is something that we can all take pride in. And so we understand with these types of projects that there's not only the daily maintenance, there's ongoing maintenance, there's a special maintenance, and so we do plan on staying on top of that. Next slide, please. And I believe that will be Sonya's, uh, so if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now or at the completion of the presentation. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now or at the completion of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Part of the, so ultimately, the project impact for us is that we would end up with a 22-unit affordable housing project. We would end the transient use and studio apartments would be leased to individual residents. KCAO and us would partner for onsite services. We would have onsite security, and this would be a local ownership. This genuinely is not a project that the state owns. We would be the owners. We certainly applied for the funding. We are asking for the state to fund the purchase of it. We are going to use state funding for conversion, but it would be a locally-owned property and locally-operated. Next slide. So the action before you today is to approve the purchase. We've negotiated a purchase price of $1,450,000. We have received a structural evaluation, and the summary of it essentially says that it's in a stable condition and may be continued to be operated in a transit or non-transit residential structure. We have secured the funding, so there will be no impact on net county costs for your action today. We are expected, we're in Escrow, and we're expected to close Escrow by December 2nd. We've made a provision in the agreement to transition from current owners 30 days after close of Escrow. We're going to need a little bit of time to transition and bring the agreements. And we would be returning to your board if today's approved with a deed to transfer the ownership to KCAO and a KCAO operational agreement. Next slide. Where we are with the state process today is we have started the underwriting process with the state HCD staff. We have uploaded the documents that are, so we have had a significant list of documents of the due diligence items that were required by the state. We are on target. Once the underwriting is completed, the standard agreement, which you have delegated the authority to me to sign last board meeting, would be prepared. And upon that signature, the funding would be released. We're currently scheduled for funding release on December 8th. Next slide. Actually, that might be it. It's the, really, the recommendations are for your board to approve the purchase, authorize me for complete the necessary documentation, and adopt the budget change. That is available for questions.
Thank you, Sonia. Any questions for Jeff or Sonia on this item? Any concerns? Supervisor Peterson.
Yeah. With respect to the contract, just reading through the contract and some issues that I had questions about. The area of hazardous substance and the inspection that was performed. And I know that, you know, we're going to purchase this and we're going to hand it off to you. And I just want to clarify my concern again that we've had experiences with flooring and other things that are outrageous in remediation. And just that you're comfortable with the hazardous substances portion of the document.
So, Supervisor Peterson, yes and no. We are comfortable with the development of this project. None of their hard plans that will be available through the state of this project.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Could you ask the dude on the mic? Because I know back home, Pete, you can't hear someone back there.
You can step up to the podium where there it is on.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
So Supervisor Peterson, we are comfortable, yes and no. So yes, to acknowledge it, I think that's really good. But we are aware that there are funds available through the state to remedy those items. So we do plan on remedying those with the state funds that would be available. So, and there are a couple of other items that we were made aware of as part of the inspection that we do need to get fixed before we begin to operate.
Okay. Thank you. And then I'll just finish up by saying, you know, I want to thank staff for, you know, going out and actually doing what you said you would do. You know, I had a project in my district, a re-entry facility that, you know, was slated to go right in a house in the middle of, you know, a neighborhood. And you very quickly hear the concerns of the public. You know, within a day, I had 80 letters from concerned citizens that were against the purchase of this facility. And, but the most concerning was is that we asked staff to go out and talk with the community and to, you know, provide information to the community on that facility. And they just blatantly didn't do it. And that led to the demise of that specific effort. And, you know, it was actually, as a supervisor, quite offensive to have, you know, a department head look at us and say that was what was going to be done, and it wasn't. And so thank you for, you know, I know there's been a long process in this. And, you know, certainly not comfortable with all of the mandates that come from the state and the requirements for a testation. And, but I think today you've laid out a, you know, a program that maybe enhances the community. I think it will enhance the community. It will be a clean project. And I think that if it's not, the community is going to step up and remind us that it's not. And, you know, today's world, there's no good answers. You know, homelessness issue is in every one of our districts. And, you know, there's just, it's just difficult answers to difficult questions. And then the mandates that follow those from, you know, the state. They limit your options. And, you know, fortunately today, there's funding for this that doesn't have to come out of, you know, our general fund. And so thank you for, you know, doing the due diligence and going out into the community and sharing this project with them. And, you know, I mean, I'm sure there's probably some concerns out there, but they haven't been laid out in front of us yet. So I don't know, maybe there is what. But anyways, to this point, thank you for doing what you're committed to do.
I do want to share with you, I have staff. And it's always an interesting thing because they work for me. So, and this is about where they live. So I have staff that live in a neighborhood of where Stardust is. And they, a couple of them participated. So they've, we have staff that logs on and listens to our meetings, and they've heard about it before. So they had, this is where their kids live, and this is where Kid Carson Elementary is, where their kids go to school. That we've had questions. And quite frankly, future projects when it comes to shelter have been informed by some of the conversations we've had. When we talk to residents, not our, including the staff that ended up sharing, one of the letters came from them. I learned about it very late last night, it was after the fact. But when we talk to the residents when it comes to their concern, the, I do believe overall net is the positive because what they compare isn't nothing to affordable housing projects. They're comparing to what is and what has been to an affordable housing project where services would be extended. And that, and the impact of services and commitment is seen as a positive. So the overall, there have been concerns that people have brought up and that we've talked through. Some of it, some of it really generated from not understanding what we're after. Some of it generated even after there is an understanding. But when people who we've talked to individually and through the community meeting lift up the concerns, when they compare what has been and what we're proposing, they're positive. The quarterly meeting that KCAO committed to came really through those conversations as well, that we want to be able to pick up the phone and call somebody and have a responsiveness. And so it's not a one-shot deal. And that's a fair expectation. So we've committed to partner with KCAO and.
Thank you. Any other comments? Supervisor, I mean, Deputy District Attorney Keith McGinnis, sorry about that.
Yes, thank you.
Whatever your title is.
Yeah. And demoted other times. So, yeah, some of the concerns that popped up in watching this project as it kind of progressed. I know a couple of weeks ago, there was the discussion whether this should have been a four-fifths vote to give the authority to negotiate. Of course, Supervisor Peterson and others assumed that it would be because of the big price tag that would be needed and the vote needed today. So I can tell you that I've been watching the homeless problem as well. Even though I wasn't invited to part of the homeless collaborative, 27 people invited, we were not. But we did our own thing with Hanford PD and Pat Jordan. We actually walked through the homeless camps. We actually made contact with the people that are the blight in our community that we, people are worried about. Many of them are 290 registrants. Many of them have drug addiction. I won't call it a drug disease because that's just a fallback that the government does when it's failed at a project. It's not a disease, it's a choice. And what we've also seen is that the projects like Home Key, and again, I respect Jeff Gardner immensely and his KCAO projects. We partner on many projects with him. He does a phenomenal job. His work in the apartments he does have stands for itself. That is a credit to that process. But the people benefiting from projects like this are not the same homeless that are out in the camps right now. The encampments now, the people causing $10,000 to railroad property damage every month and causing break-ins in homes and doing the criminal activity, those are folks who want to be homeless. They want to do their drugs. They don't want all the rules that are necessary to comply with one of these facilities. We even had a recent victim who could not manage the rules of the current facility, and so she chose to leave. And it's unfortunate because they choose their drugs and their lifestyle over the services that are offered. Now, we have lots of services, and for the one-third of people who become homeless and seek to get off out of being homeless, these services work. For the one-third of people who have mental health problems, that's a whole different issue. These services aren't going to work because they're not mentally sane and mentally capable of contracting and conducting their affairs in the right way. Then you have that other one-third people who, you know, they have a drug problem, but they're not criminally, or they're not insane in any way. And, but they do their criminal acts, and they want to be homeless. You're never going to solve those folks. They're going to use these places for their own benefit. I think a recent example of this concept, even though it's not the true Home Key, but is the Travelodge in Lemoore. We had a claim that their people were released there in the height of COVID with no issues. However, we had a mass shooting on the backside of that motel that nobody wanted to talk about. We had an uptick in COVID cases after those particular people were put into that motel, into that community. Chief of Police reports, in the first week, 47 calls for service, and they had no idea it was going on and what the uptick was from. It's because of the quality of individual who has no respect for themselves or the respect of others. These types of projects may or may not be valuable in a community like ours. But I know that in a community like Escondido, who tried the project, saw an increase in homelessness, almost doubled from about 250 to 450 homelessness. The city right across the way rejected the money. And they went from having, you know, 35 homeless down to eight homeless. So they rejected these types of programs that enable people to continue the conduct, which leads them to homelessness anyway because there are rules with these projects. What caught my attention was just this week, we were notified that there's a 40% projected cut to victim services. All the while, we have millions of dollars being spent for homeless projects that the people who are the problem are not going to use. And it gives me concern because residents in the El Rancho area, of course, call me, thinking that I would be involved in the discussions with Health and Human Services. Yet, I've never, never been. And think that it's my fault that we want to let criminals into the community. And I have to explain to them without deflecting because to some degree, it is my fault if I remain silent. It is my fault if I'm part of this group as our local government who does nothing and keeps taking the carrot that the state provides to follow their rules and to meet their agendas. But it doesn't comport with our family values here. It doesn't really comport with our values. We all have compassion for the homeless. You know, we all would do something to help somebody who wants to help themselves. Those are the values that we put out there that nobody else in the state seems to follow anymore. So we keep having an increased homeless problem despite the millions of dollars we spend towards it. This appears to be yet one of those other projects. We're going to get 22 new beds. There's millions of dollars being taken from some other government coffers. And from my perspective, I see that as 40% of victim services. And when you have folks in a community who do harm to others, who's going to make up for that harm? None of these rules comport with making up for harm to victims. And it starts to be offensive after a while, even though I too am human. I want to try anything that needs to be tried to solve a homeless problem. But these tactics haven't worked in Escondido. They didn't work in Marin County. They recently rejected such a project after having two others. And so we should take that hint that this isn't good for our community. We really are the last bastion of respect and responsibility in this state. And if we keep, you know, it almost feels like they dangle money and we prostitute ourselves out for it. Whatever they want, we'll do for the money. We keep bouncing back and forth. And the one thing they're not offering money for is victim services. They're offering money for new police stations and new buildings. They're not offering money for mental health treatment and drug treatment. You know, we have a nice building right here on Lacy Boulevard that could be revamped for the tune of probably $5 million that could give mental health treatment and some drug treatment. Because the homeless people who are the blight in our community, those are their two problems, or two-thirds of it. The other one, they're already getting services and being taken care of. And they are becoming not homeless after a while. So again, it's unfortunate. I didn't have the advance notice of the presentation here. I would have loved to have listened in on the 19th. I wasn't aware that it was happening. I heard from the board meeting, a community meeting would be happening. Never heard notice. I paid attention. I tried to seek it out. I didn't get a letter in the mail because I don't live in that district. But I would just caution the board on, stop following breadcrumbs. I mean, we keep going down a path of it's free money. If we don't get it, somebody else will. And we're doing it to the detriment of our own values. Well, maybe the state should be coughing up this money for our brand of rehabilitation, for our brand of fixing these problems. Because it seemed to work longer than it did in the other areas. And now that we're infected with LA thought process and Sacramento thought process, our county's dwindling too. Because when we entered into the homeless issue, we had 88 homeless identified in this, in Hanford. We worked with Pat Jordan with Hanford. We watched that number increase in the first year after everybody's creating homeless collaboratives to 113, 119. This year, it's 256. So what's being done isn't working. The service is there, and Jeff does a great job with services as well. They're not taking them. That's a problem. Why send good money after bad? And I just cautioned the board. I really, you know, debated whether to even speak up because I know some will criticize and say, it's not even in your wheelhouse. This is my community too. It's my wheelhouse. I've stayed quiet out of respect for other department heads. But frankly, I just think we keep taking from one department to feed another, and we end up holding the bag anyway. And, you know, I'm not in a position to make any recommendations to the board. You're going to do what you're going to do. But I just wanted my voice heard to know that I'm speaking out because others have called me. Others have said, they won't listen to any of us. If you speak up, maybe they'll listen. And I've told them they won't. But you'll at least hear the message and know that it exists in our community. People in El Rancho don't want it. People countywide think these are boondoggles and shouldn't be going down these paths. They were proud of this board for fighting High Speed Rail. And they're proud of this board for all that work there. This is another bastion we need to fix Kings County way. Because it doesn't work the way the rest of the folks are doing it. That'll stop unless somebody wants to ask any questions.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So on this model here, we were on a CSAT call last week, and there was some examples. And they talked about Marin County. And they talked about Sannefer County, and they talked about San Joaquin County. The model that they use in San Joaquin County and Sannefer County actually worked. And they talked about the reduction of homeless because they were able to monitor the homelessness and separate the mental illness from the drugs to the people that actually needed it. Marin County, I don't know, there wasn't a whole lot of explanation. I know that the governor was upset because he felt they should do what he told them to do, and they did not do it. I think their problem might be a little different than ours because of the income level. And, you know, I know that I sat in on a couple of meetings where they talked about the sex trafficking from the probation department about the abuse of women being abused at the Stardust Hotel. This solves that problem at that hotel. It's only 22 rooms. It's a good way to get our foot in the door and see if it worked as a model without spending a whole lot of money. I do understand that if you have these services available to the homeless, you attract more homeless. And you don't really get rid of the. And you don't really get rid of the problem, and I understand the breadcrumbs, I'm against it as well. I did sit in on Sonia, I told her I'm against this project from the beginning, I wouldn't support it. And the more I learned about it, the better I felt about it. So I came around a little bit, and it's not such a big project that we won't be able to handle it. I think the 22 rooms is a perfect example of, you know, whether it works or not. Either way, we get the sex trafficking out of that hotel, and we can move on and move forward. But I do appreciate your comments, Keith, and I wish you would have been brought in early on the conversation. I think that would have been a great asset to the program. So we need to get Keith, apparently his email's not working good, we got to get him updated so he gets all the stuff, or we got to reach out one extra time for him, because I know he's busy. So I appreciate your comments, so very well received. Anybody else?
There was no comments from Suzy Figuendes, I was going to give him first go, it's his district.
Yeah, we did get a support letter from the community people in El Rancho today, I think, in our packet this morning. Sup, Figuendes, you have anything to say? Kind of know what you feel, you've said enough.
You know, this board has a unique, I think, perspective, because we also sit as a housing authority. And through the housing authority, we have, you know, almost 700 Section 8 housing vouchers. We are really watching the market, and those Section 8 vouchers are harder and harder for private enterprise to take into rentals, because we have, we don't have enough housing units in the area. And so that's putting the rents at a higher level. This project has the ability to interject, and granted, it's $63,000 a unit, almost $64,000 a unit, 22 units, $1.4 million. It's not a big, it's not a big project to address some of those affordable housing issues. But unfortunately, I don't see anything on the horizon to bring affordable housing into Kings County. All of those affordable housing dollars are being consumed by the large urban areas. And the District Attorney is absolutely correct, we are following the breadcrumbs, but we're following the small breadcrumbs, because we can't get the big breadcrumbs of creating affordable housing units. This is a very small postage stamp on a very large problem, and I think it's going to be larger in the future, because the price of lumber, the price of, you know, before, the biggest part of building a house was the lumber. Today, the biggest part of building a structure is the permits and the applications and bonding and everything else. The lumber is the cheaper part of the process anymore. And that's very, very unfortunate, because that adds an additional cost to affordable housing that you just can't subsidize. I was very pleasantly surprised that the structural report came back, that this 50-year-old structure was sound. It's unlike the example Supervisor Peterson, you know, gave about a residential area and a residential home in a residential area, this has already been a commercial building in a commercial area. I think the zoning, you know, is very adequate for that. And instead of a transient-type population, it'll be hopefully a more stable population. Again, because that affordable housing element, I just don't see manifesting itself in the near future. And so I think this project is worth further consideration, further investment, realizing that that's only 22 rooms out of a 688, you know, almost 700 Section 8 vouchers that we have in the community. But I just don't see any other affordable housing units coming down. I think they're going to be much more expensive. We reached that plateau to where refurbishing an existing structure is more affordable than building new. And again, for $63,000 a unit, it's not too many years ago, you could have built a house for that, today you can't. And so I think the ability to retrofit this, and I'm going to just say it, multifamily dwelling into a more stable affordable housing unit, I think, kind of makes sense. The location kind of makes sense. And it's just unfortunate where it's at, but that's just the way the zoning falls, and that's the way that transient operation has worked for the last 50 years. So with that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I do have some concerns, but I'm going to keep it positive, they're just concerns, they're not hits. They're not disrespects, they're just concerned. But first, I do want to just acknowledge the fact that, I mean, I don't agree that, it's been a long discussion. We get a little bit more in-depth, I give you that, every week. In the last month, we get a little bit more in-depth, but it's still a lot of information to absorb, to feel confident in the decision-making. And so on that, when, you know, we at least get to meet weekly, Mr. Chair, KCAO, their Board of Directors, Jeff, do you mind coming to the podium? Because I'll just give you a heads up, I got a couple of questions. KCAO, I believe, they meet twice a month or once a month, their Board of Directors, once a month. And you got a damn good board, I got good friends on there, go ahead, sir, step up. Good friends on there, elected officials on there who, they love serving on KCAO. And I know they're doing a good job. That being said, Mr. Garner, is, as we meet weekly, and it is a lot to absorb here, right? Are you telling the board that your Board of Directors is confidence, confident in what you're asking to inherit this responsibility? Is it a 50- or 55-year commitment?
50? 55.
55, so a 55-year responsibility. That has, how many times has your board met on this issue that, where it was on the agenda? And they're able to absorb it and give you the confidence to come here today to ask for what you're asking for?
So our board met once to discuss it. It wouldn't require our board approval, because it's a D, not a purchase. But the two concerns that our board had was the 55-year covenant. They thought that was long, but based on the information that was shared by Sonia, that's the requirement of the state to have the 55-year covenant. The other concern was with any of our contracts that we enter into, is there a walkout clause? Meaning that, you know, six years from now, four years from now, 28 years from now, if that project's not working for KCAO, could we walk out, hand it back to the county, and the county finds another partner? So those are the concerns that the board has. So in my discussions with Sonia, and I know she mentioned that the deed and agreement would come before the board if, you know, if this continues, those are the two things that I would want to discuss. It doesn't look like the 55-year covenant is anything we can move off from, but we would seek to do some type of, I'm sure there's probably a better legal term than a walk away, but that's what we would look.
Well, your board had.
A transfer, yeah, and they do exist, because they, the housing authority entered into that building, existing building construction in Lemoore, and that has transferred over. So as long as that contracting operation is transferable, and a 55-year, we certainly don't want to encumber anybody for that, you know, two generations. We certainly want to have transfer abilities, and I think that should be built in and should be inherited.
Yes, sir, thank you, because that's a concern, it is a concern of mine, and like I said, you have a good board. So those are the two questions that I'm leaving down, because, well, you know, if you're asking for this, and I call it a 55-year responsibility, then I ask myself, what skin in the game does KCAO have? So what is your funding source, sir, to service this and keep this operating?
So our funding source would be set up with a two-year operational funds that the county has applied and received funding for through the state. Also through the rent that would be collected at the units right now. If all the units are filled, and if we charge fair market rate, it'd be close to about $200,000 that would be brought in on an annual basis just in rent alone. We also have, we're a direct recipient of the Community Services Block Grant. As a community action agency, we receive that funding each year. Right now, we receive about $300,000. And the focus of that funding is to specifically address community needs. And so with this need being a high-ranking need on our community needs assessment, there is strong justification to use some of those funds to cover the cost that maybe that the rent that's coming in wouldn't be able to cover. But also, we have good partnerships around the community. I know the city of Hanford, they receive community development block grant funds. And with this being in their area, I think there's an opportunity to partner with them. There's no guarantee of that, I will say that on record, but I do feel like there's opportunities there. Plus, with our Kings to Larry Housing Alliance that we have a good relationship with, I do feel like there's an opportunity to seek additional funding if needed to support the program. That is a good concern that you're raising, because we do look at that in any of our programs, is what's not only the funding solution for, you know, the next year or two, but the next five and 10 years going forward, do we have that funding to support this type of project?
Yes, thank you, sir, and that's 55, not five and 10, that's 55. Understandable to the walkout clause, for the lack of a better term. And so, I mean, but even with all that being said here in our chambers, in your Board of Directors' room, sounds like your board still has questions, is that fair to say?
That is fair to say, yes.
Okay, so on the walkout clause, if in 10, 12, let's throw a number out, 20 years from now, KCAO finds itself in a situation where it can no longer hold on to this responsibility, you want to quote "walk out," then I guess my question through the chair to the CAO or our fiscal folks is, so then the county inherits that 35-year chunk of responsibility out there, correct? The county, the responsibility, fiscal responsibility would come back to the county? If they walked out in 20 years and they said, hey, we can't operate this anymore, and they quote "walk out," there's a 35-year responsibility left, right? From the 55-year responsibility from accepting this money, the state's saying, here's the money, but there's a 55-year responsibility attached, am I wrong?
No, you are correct on that, the state requires a 55-year covenant.
They walk out, there's 35 years left, does the county inherit that responsibility?
The property reverts back to us. Oh, sorry. The property reverts back to the county, and the county would then own a property that requires for another however many years that the property be used for the purpose of affordable housing. But there is nothing, as Supervisor Nev says, that would impede the county's ability to contract for those services or to re-deed it to another agency.
In the meantime, without knowing the future, right? In the meantime, Mr. Chair, let's say that takes three years to get someone else in there to step up, like KCAO is stepping up to the plate today. That's a three-year, let's just look at the fiscal responsibility. Is that a county fiscal responsibility that future boards would have to navigate annually in their budget? I'll just keep it a fiscal.
Well, let me just say this about that, that depends on the contract. That depends on what the county does with KCAO in order to set up the deed agreement. The county could require an X period of time for notice of intent to terminate the obligation and give the county time to find that and commit the transfer before KCAO steps out or walks away. To your point, though, there is risk, because even if there's a two-year notice period or a three-year notice period before KCAO could terminate its services, there's no guarantee that the county could find a different contractor to provide that service. But I think with a long enough notice period, that it mitigates the risk. I'm sorry, Supervisor.
I'm sorry, these questions all through the chair, just, so what's a typical notice period? Is it one year, is it two years?
It depends on the contract, this is an unusual beast. Some provide no notice period, some contracts provide a month, some provide 90 days. It depends on the service that you're purchasing and what constitutes adequate notice.
Yes, ma'am, and obviously, Mr. Chair, these are very detailed, you've got to cut off.
Answer a couple of those questions, so on my contract, I tried to do six months. We just did five years at the car station with the tribe.
Okay.
You can do anything in there if you like, whatever your comfortable.
And that was a very special discussion, as this one is, and I appreciate this one too. So that being said, those are very detailed conversations to get to that agreement that we don't have today. And I would assume Mr. Garner has a couple of trips back and forth with his Board of Directors as well. And so on that timeline there, just give me a second, look at my notes, because I appreciate, I'm good right now, Mr. Garner, thank you, on the KCAO subject, I appreciate that. So if we, let's say the county inherits it back in 20 years, and it's a fiscal, just some stick into the fiscal. So the board would depend on their general fund to backfill any fiscal strains on that county's budget? Say 20 years from now, we get this back?
The county would look to Human Services and the programs that they have set up within Human Services to fund those. And we'd look anywhere that we could to fund those first.
So what I want to reiterate, this is housing, not a program. So our staff that's going to be on location, when I'm using my existing Medi-Cal, CalFresh funding, the operation piece of it is repair and cost of security, cost of PG&E, those kind of costs. People are going to be paying rents, and so they're either paying rents because they're earning. So remember, it isn't the 300 homeless people that we're putting in there, it's people who have gone into a shelter or into a motel and are ready to be housed, and they're signing a lease agreement to rent housing. Most people don't move every single year, some do, people who rent versus own tend to move more. But they're paying rents, whether they're by income, their SSI, or their subsidies. Those subsidies get collected by the property manager. So really, what we need is a property manager, services as us, KCAO going, I'm the owner, I'm the property manager. Their rents will be paying that, we wouldn't have, whether it's five years from now, 20 or 25, if you know reason to stop renting it, unless the building disappears and then our obligation goes away. So if the building went up in smoke, we're not bound to replace it. But people would be paying rent, those rents will pay for PG&E maintenance and upkeep. We could collect those rents as well as KCAO is, we normally aren't in business of being a rent owners, which is why partnership makes sense. But right now, right now, we're sheltering at $95 a day, 83 people, 46 of whom we've referred to KCAO, Champions, Salvation Army, whole bunch of programs out there. 46 were to be, they have documentation, they have their DMV, anything they need. 19 have been accepted out of 46, 19, they have money, whether their own income, SSI, or subsidies, and I can't find them places to rent, whether they're single individuals, couples. We have, my staff have now started texting me, my eligibility workers out there have started texting me when they find an apartment. We search that much. The issue of ongoing rent is not an issue, we have nowhere to rent, and our landlords are cooperating with us. It's, there is just not enough stock out there that that cost of housing, who's going to cover the ongoing maintenance and upkeep, it really would be rent. So whoever is operating it, I don't see that as a risk to general fund, I genuinely don't.
Okay, thank you. So if KCAO walks out in five years and it comes back to the county, those renters are still in there, right? They're still in there. And let's say that's a two- to three-year issue, so we can't find another KCAO type of organization to partner up with us. I mean, is that a comfortable scenario for us? I'm not even going to say 20 years out anymore, let's, I'll keep it within our timeframe of us generally having it. Let's say we're still here in five years. This is something that we are generally responsible for as elected officials, as the CAO. This is something that we really want to get into the woods on.
So I know that we had an active person that was going to manage it before KCAO, that has so many projects that they can't handle the small ones, they have big ones that matter. There are people out there that are looking for these projects, but they want to have. There are people out there that are looking for these projects, but they want to have a bigger bang for their buck. They don't want 22 rooms. They want 650 rooms. They want 200 rooms. This is a unique small project. So this is what, it fits our model for our county being small and be able to start up on our own. And it fits K C O's model, K C A O's model too. I forget how many he, he, he gave out, 250? So it's, it's not that big a deal for him. Uh, been doing it for years. These people are out there, even private enterprise. We have people that want to come start up their own business now and, and kind of have these projects going on. You know, we're costing us a little over, I just roughly $60,000 a month to house people out there. So we're wasting, with the money we'd get from rent at $757 per, per room, uh, which would be more per person, but we're, it's costing us $44,000 a month extra. We should, we could be spending on something else. And we're saving money by doing this. But we're purchasing it with someone else's money, with the CARES Act money.
And, and Mr. Chair, and it's, it's almost like the housing authority, you know, the housing authority has its ups and downs. And when there's investors out there that have a return on investment that build a new structure, everybody that qualifies is going to go to that new structure because it has a pool or it has a, you know, recreation area or it has something, some amenity that they want. And so everybody that qualifies is going to go to that new one. But there's always going to be people that are going to need that entry-level affordable housing component. And even though this isn't the right time for the housing authority to do it because they, they have an adequate amount of, of stock, I just don't see any investors. And even though that there is a small, uh, retirement, uh, structure going in in Lamore again on, by the cinnamon, and, and there are some smaller units going in, I just don't see any big ones on the horizon. And this is more proactive than reactive, waiting until there's just no stock out there at all that you can rent. And, and, and so there, there is some speculation to it. But, um, I think as far as government, I don't think there's a, a large exposure. Uh, is, is there speculation? Absolutely. Is there exposure? I think 22 units is going to be small enough to be able to handle.
And with Cal, Cal P F A, we've approved a lot of these. We're 10%, 20%, 15%. It's all allowable for this type of, of, uh, housing in large pieces. We've done a couple, one, one in L A was like 3,000 units.
Yeah.
And they said 10% had to be just for this purpose here. So there's people out there.
And through, um, California Community Housing Agency, they are also, they have the model of the property management model. Um, so there are entities out there that do do this. Um, granted, they're at a much larger scale, I would agree.
This is all in-house for us, so we can utilize the tools we have at our hands.
And Mr. Chair.
Good question though.
Yeah. And the cha, the challenge is going to be what the governor did when you can't, when you can't really, um, uh, kick anybody out. You have, they have to stay there in place. And so that's where a lot of, uh, private enterprise and a lot of public housing is struggling right now because you can't evict anybody. And then they know. Yeah, yeah.
I'm in base this March.
Yeah. Yeah, no. And, 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 uh, people out there know it and they, they're taking advantage of it. And they're going to wait till January to leave, you know?
And the governor.
Until that eviction, uh, stay, you know, stays in place. And then, and District Attorney is absolutely right. We're, you, you, you know, we're on a boat, but we're not steering it.
Hmm.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's being steered by Sacramento. It's just, do you want to get on the boat and go for a ride?
And then that's, that's kind of where I'm going to close with is that, uh, you know, they put, they put the money out there. We've admitted to it. We see, we see the money. But I, I could get how staff would want to rush to that money. They, they want to, I'm saying the word rushed because we've had a month here to, when this was presented, to knowing the day's coming, to making the decision. And to me, in the rush, I'm not going to say where, I'm going to say there. Positively, there, making mistakes. Mistakes are being made in the rush to go get money. And, and as elected officials, we're gonna, we're, if we vote, if we pass this, we assume all of that. It's no longer on their plate. On the bureaucracy side and staff, it's on the elected official side. And we as leaders, we're going to have to answer to this. And just right now, I'm, I'm, I, as I've thought all weekend on it, I'm, I'm just not there. I'm just not there yet because it is, it's, it's too much. Even, even the special meeting today, that we had to rush something. And I'm still, I'm waiting till we get to that part so I could understand that part. But to call us for a special meeting in the middle of a regularly scheduled meeting, that puts questions out there. When, when I see that, I'm used to seeing, getting an email, hey, we're going to have a special meeting. I, I thought you wanted to meet maybe one, one, the day before Thanksgiving or the day after Thanksgiving. I open the email and I'm saying, a special meeting at 10:00 a.m. on Tuesday, November 24th. That's in the middle of our regular meeting. So whatever that is, and we'll get to that, I guarantee that has to do with, because we're being rushed. And in the, the process of being rushed, we're making mistakes, mistakes that I'm not comfortable with. And, and if anything, I would be more comfortable with, we just got a lot of information our way again. We absorbed more. Mr. Garner, clearly, and I appreciate his honesty, has to go back to his board of directors. I would be very much more comfortable is that we absorb all this, you call a special meeting to come back on this one item, to give everybody the opportunity to, to get, to make, to make a decision without being, without being rushed and having the ability to absorb more. And I know staff's going to say, well, we have this deadline and I can't, I can't make decisions off a deadline that somebody put me in on.
Well, if we don't vote on it now, we don't have a special meeting. So that's, that's it. I know, from what I understood is, we've been working on this project for, I'm going to say nine months. I was against it from the beginning. Uh, I, I fell into it. I started understanding it. Uh, we didn't, we had a, we had an active partner that was going to run it for us that got too busy because they qualify for several other projects in the county at the same time. We were left standing there. Uh, the owner of the property decided that he had a value to it. So he increased it to somebody else and they had to back out. Uh, we got it reappraised in a short time, got it to where we could afford it. I think the housing authority from the Clary County teams, uh, got together. They're going to offset the difference if we needed it. Uh, the governor's office went and they bent the rules so that we do qualify. We don't qualify under the, the normal term that was put under the first time. They're giving us an opportunity to come together as a board to make this work and they think it's going to be good for our community. We don't have to do it. Uh, we would qualify for it under regular terms. Because we, we missed all the deadlines because of the, the, the part we were built. Uh, so that's why we're behind. It's nothing to do with staff. It has to do with the fact that, uh, there's a timeline on it. It's CARES Act money. Is that correct?
It is. It, so the application, we applied and every other community applied. This is, so the, uh, the applications came out July 22nd. The initial deadlines were August 13th as a priority. We could have applied as late as September 29th. This is a competitive process. And for the first time in a decade, certainly first time in the past five years, we've had an opportunity to say, come up with a project and apply as opposed to, here's a pot of money and you get some level of allocation and then you create a project to the level of allocation. So this isn't a state project. We created it. We competed for it. And my commitment to you back on August 4th was, we're going to of the 11 projects pick two that we would do anyway. I just want to use the opportunity of the money. So yes, in some ways we are following the money, but unless, unless we apply for it, it is, I would be asking you for general fund. I think these projects, the two that we applied for are worth the doing, whether you're putting a general fund dollar in it or the state dollar. It's just that you don't tend to give me general fund dollars for discretionary stuff, and this would be discretionary. Um, it, we came up with a project, I will tell you, so I happen to know Madera County. They, they tried to put in two applications as well. They couldn't get one together and their second one wasn't funded. Larger counties get funded first because they got points on volume. So Fresno and Visalia got four projects, Fresno got four projects before, before we got one because our project was 22 and they'd rather fund a 250 number thing. So our project got funded. We got noticed. The state's assumption was, on both of our projects, that we will continue working on it, funding and doing it regardless of their funding because they're going, it's your project. They have adjusted and we have adjusted both of our projects 100%. So we went to them, applied with one thing and said, well, it didn't quite work for us because not that we've, we've adjusted it some more. We want to adjust it. They have said yes to every single adjustment we've made. This is not them driving it. We've driven this process. Their piece is that there's a pot of funds available, apply for it. And our latest adjustment was at one of the board meetings, Supervisor Nev suggested additional property. We did not think of the additional property for additional parking. But that's really, we went to the state and said, can we adjust the application and add an additional A P N, or really two, uh, to the application? And we waited for their authority to say yes. And then, okay, we can, we can adjust the project to create it. So while.
Which is why we called for the special meeting at 10 o'clock today.
Yes.
And see, that, that right there, Mr. Chair, is, just goes into, uh, the overall. One, the project has good merits. Two, there's any. Three, who wants to help the homeless? Hey, my hand is up. Way before this project.
Got a motion?
No. Uh, but what I'm, but what I'm saying is, when I compare it to the experience of what we do here, uh, counsel, I'm allowed to be direct about, uh, um, making a point with the property being negotiated in my district on the west side. Or is that closed session?
You, you are welcome to make whatever point that's pertinent to this discussion.
Okay. Um, so we, the county has clearly a discussion going on in Avonale with the building that I believe both of us mutually already agree on and we both benefit on it, without going into detail. Um, that's taken three years. And I'm hearing it's been on council's desk for months. And leadership from Count Avonale calls me every two weeks. This is on our closed session. Do you have an update? I don't know. Let me refer you to Rebecca. They reach out to Rebecca countless times. And nothing happens. That's, that's a three-year. And then you want me to make a decision on three days that we don't even keep 100% of the responsibility for, for now. And then we kick it to K C A O. Then you have people on the board of directors who've met one time on this. That's the part. By staying positive, that's the negative of it. And that, and that's, that's what makes it, uh, hard. And then you got the timeline. So, you know, clearly, um, I'm saying there are concerns out there. There's some more information that could come back, more time to absorb. I would be more comfortable if you exercised your authority and you pushed this back to, understanding there's a timeframe, but there's a little bit of fat in the time that has to be to push back as well, not, not call for, uh, an answer today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Can we get Avonale down? Is there something that we're doing?
We can't discuss that because it's not agendized. Um, but.
One thing, uh, one thing affects another. And this is where, this is where time is of the essence and three years is ridiculous when it comes to government procedure to drag things out. And we're getting sick of it. We just talked about it on the first slide. I like things done. I make a decision before I go to bed at night. I get it done. And I'm getting tired of the count, of the, of the county dragging things out forever. I think it's time to get our head out of our ass, get things done on time. It's going to affect a project that someone has worked, deals will be on for the last 60 days because of actions of others that have happened throughout the last couple of years. And that's what I'm saying right now. Appreciate your comments. Sorry about being upset about it, but I'm getting tired of this crap too. Uh, these meetings are getting drawn out forever on nonsense. It didn't used to be this way. Uh, so any further questions? We can, how, what's our timeframe on this? We got to get it done today?
So are, we asked the state to delay the funding to the eighth. Part of it is, there's three actions today. There's a purchase, which is three fifths vote, and the closure of the documents, but there's a budget related to it. If we don't, we can't start, um, underwriting until we have the property. So, um, I don't, we don't have till December 8th. That's your next meeting. Um, do you have a couple of more days? Yes. Um, but the reality is your next board meeting is December 8th. And we don't have to walk away from status. We don't have the funding from the state. We would be walking away from the funding to the state. That's the, I think this is, I genuinely believe this is a good project regardless of what funds it. It's just hard to walk away from, the state gave us liberty of up to $3.5 million to, to have, to purchase a building to convert it. And I don't know if there could be a special meeting to, uh, but they've certainly adjusted every timeline um, they've given us. And part of our pushback was, well, we awarded it later than the average. Um, but I don't, I, I genuinely don't know if the underwriting, uh, we need to close escrow. We need to get through underwriting in a standard agreement and, and be funded. And all of that needs to happen by December 30th. This, we agreed to December 2nd. Then we asked the state to adjust it to December 8th, um, in order for escrow to close. I don't know if a couple of days would really make a difference. But I do know that December 8th, which is your next scheduled board meeting, would be late, would be too late.
Right, Riley? What are you comfortable with?
Uh, I mean, I would say, I appreciate you hearing me out, but I'd say that's for staff to figure out, Mr. Chairman.
So we got a, we don't, we don't probably have a forfeit today unless you have a little time to think about it? Or you want the staff to, uh, identify some of the questions?
Uh, I'm asking for more time to, uh, absorb this. Clearly, uh, Mr. Garner needs some time, uh, with his board.
He won't meet till the, the first? And I had, I took a couple of phone calls from his staff. They're excited about it. But I haven't talked to all, all the board members.
Right. So our board of directors meets on the third Wednesday of the month. Uh, we have a executive committee meeting. I'll meet the first Thursday of the month. But it will not require board approval. It's just my ability to communicate to my board the updates that are happening, which I can do.
You don't, you don't need board approval to inherit a 55-year responsibility?
I did. Based on our policies and by laws now.
Wow. And we have trouble getting, we have trouble getting a forfeit's vote. And he's got carte blanche on a 55-year, uh, hey, give me the bill.
Well.
If you need more time, would a special meeting on December 2nd suffice?
You need, you think you'd be okay by the second? Would that rally?
I, I'm saying I'd like to keep, uh, doing the research, Mr. Chairman.
I'm, I'm afraid December 2nd. So if we need, if we did a three-year, we could, we could, or a special meeting. And if I could chime in on a point that was made earlier before the conversation. Uh, going to Supervisor Valley, what happens if K C A O backs out? We talked about the transfer of the property, the property converting back to the county. We've had to turn it over to a different agency, uh, if you want it. The one thing we didn't talk about is in remotely meant that the county is unable to find another contractor continuing to need the property. The county would then, could then sell the property and give the money back to the state. That's, that's what the covenant is all about, is that if you stop providing the service, you have to liquidate the asset and give the money back. There would not be a problem selling that property. Not only would it be uprooted in the source hole, it would be 100% empty. So you could set the purchase price at whatever the market bear at the time. And you would then just relinquish the money back to the state. The, the risk of failing at the long-term commitment and mitigating.
And I think the negotiated price, I think we would do extremely well selling it after we got it today. I think it's reduced value. And we, they, because they were offered a million dollars more for it the last time. But this would be a plus-plus for us. I don't think we have a whole lot to lose unless we don't vote on it today. Appreciate your support if we can get it. Um, and we understand your concern when it comes to the other issue of your district. And we'll work on that as well.
And I don't want to make that a, a tick, a tick for tech. I wasn't saying it, I wasn't saying it like that. I was just saying it in, that if it takes that long, then I appreciate it takes that long. But how come it doesn't take that long on this issue? That's all I'm saying.
I get it.
Yeah.
Like I said, I get up in the morning, I make a decision, probably go to bed at night, I, whatever I decided to do is done.
Yes, sir.
And I get frustrated if I can't get it done with a timely manner. And the government is not that way. And it drives me nuts.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I think we discussed it plenty. Uh, I say just take it to vote, see what we got. And if it don't work, it don't work. And if it works, then, uh, well, congratulations. We'll see. We'll have a motion.
So movement, Chair?
Go by Supervisor Nev. Take them by Supervisor Peterson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Your Nev?
Yes.
Your Valley?
Uh, Mr. Chair, with the, uh, five-second comment to the vote is that I believe that the president-elect Biden is more, uh, appreciative to the homeless issue. And I'm confident he'll work with Governor Newsom to send funds. he'll work with Governor Newsom to send funds this way where we could sit down and find better location for this, more centralized to services, groceries, counseling, everything that these folks would need that they don't have with this current location. And, and then we could really tackle the homeless process, right? I would look forward to that day. Uh, but today, based on the timeline and, and the lack of the time, uh, it's a no. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ted Verdon?
Yes.
Fred Peterson?
Hi.
Richard Fagundes?
No.
Yeah, item fails three to two. Uh, thank you for your comments. Okay. We'll move on now to the next item, which is, uh, John Devlin.
Good morning, Chairman Verdon. I think it's still morning. Yes. Uh, and your fellow board members. What we have for you here is, uh, for firewall system purchase. Um, we went through, um, because of COVID, we had three firewalls that we were going to use to segment the internal network from each other. And so we repurposed those to be able to support telework, VPNing in for the county workforce. Luckily we had them available, otherwise we would have been in a world of hurt. Um, and these, these, this firewall system would backfill that need for the county. This segmenting of the network means setting up the security internally on the county's network to keep HIPAA, DII, CGS, and DOJ and Elections Network safe from hackers internally as well as externally. And it's required for HIPAA, DOJ, CGS. If this equipment is not purchased and installed, the county will not be in compliance with the mandates of HIPAA, CGS, and DOJ, and DOJ and could face penalties if audited or hacked. The fiscal impact is 335,000. 30% of that or $100,500 is from HSA and 234,500 is from general fund contingencies. Available for any question?
Yes. Miss, I would like to add, um, could you explain a little information on the penetration test that was just done?
Sure. Um, Elections had some money to do some, a penetration test, which basically means you hire a, they call them white hat hackers. And so we hired this firm to do a test and they highly recommended doing the segmentation of the network because that prevents people, if they get in anywhere, if there's a weak link in your armor, I'll just pick on a small department, let's just say Ag. If they were able to get into Ag, then, then they could get to anything in the whole county. And what this does is it prevents it. So they might be able to attack just Ag's pieces, but not the rest of the county. And I don't mean to pick on Ag. Sorry. Did I answer the question?
Yes, it does. Uh, that was performed at our county and, uh, we received a lengthy report on it. And with all of the requirements of HIPAA under the coronavirus, um, this need did rise due to the pandemic, um, to come board to the board. So to upgrade the firewalls.
So no other discussion, um, Mr. Chair, move for adoption. Uh, these firewalls are very important. Uh, whether you're a financial institution like the banks or, or the credit unions, we are continually bombarded with these. Uh, there are people out there that know, uh, that intelligent system and, and are continually trying to steal information. And I think this is just another step. And I, I expect these to come very more, more often in the future because as technology changes and the, and the, uh, the mentality of the, the people that want to do harm just continue to want to, uh, infiltrate and, and imperminate some of these, uh, firewalls. And, and every time you buy a new one and every time you get a new one, uh, a new improved one, uh, somebody comes all the way on how to get around it. So unfortunately, this is just the day of the time and move for adoption.
Moved by Supervisor Nevs. Second by Supervisor Peterson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Ted Verdon?
Hi.
Fred Peterson?
Hi.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Item passes five in favor and we will take a short recess for at least, let's say 10 minutes in the restroom and come back.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Good luck.
It is eleven twenty-two, and this is still a regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors, and we will go now between items out of sequence. We will go to a special board meeting by the Kings County Board of Supervisors at ten a.m. It is now going to be eleven forty-two p.m., and this is a special meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Madam Court, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Chair.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Braboon.
Here.
Craig Peterson.
Still here.
Richard Fagundis.
Here.
And we're in scheduled appearances. Do we have anybody that'd like to speak on this item at all?
I have no one with their hands raised.
No one on the phone, and this is a regular meeting. Item is he would serve the agency, Sonia Begay. Sonia, would you just come to the podium and explain?
So this item is requesting-
Take your microphone off.
Oh. It is. I just need it to be closer. So this item is requesting your board to approve, to appoint me a negotiator and approve a purchase of two vacant lots next to the Stardust Motel. During one of the discussions on October twentieth, your board, actually with Supervisor Nevs's suggestion, to add, once Stardust Motel would be converted to a, I don't know if there's really a point of this item at the moment, but I'm going to keep with it. If Stardust Motel was to be converted to permanent housing, we needed additional parking. There are two vacant lots next to the, next to the Stardust Motel that were available for sale. We asked the state to add these properties to our application. We were successful. And but your board never took the action to actually appoint me a negotiator for those particular properties or to, or gave me the authority to sign them. So this agenda item would essentially request your board's approval to negotiate for the two properties. The third item of the, that's part of this agenda item that is negotiated, we have actually not gotten a final agreement with the, with the property owner yet. We were hoping that we can execute this in the same timeframe as Stardust and add, add it to the Home Key application. I still believe that could be done, but it would be, today's action really would be to appoint me negotiator for those two properties and to authorize me to sign that paperwork. It would still need a return to your board when it actual negotiation of the properties done.
Thank you. Does the board have any desire to buy vacant pieces of ground for parking?
I think whether you defer any kind of a hotel or not, in seven years, we're going to group our money on this property and do very well. But if the board decides not to do it for personal reasons or presidential, then that still be it. We'll just walk away and let someone else take your money out. Because this property is going to sell on that one.
And I agree, Ms. Chair. I think there is a total of five, five lots. We're only negotiating on two of them?
Yes. The owner, the owner of the empty lots next to Stardust is different than Stardust.
Yeah.
They weren't willing to engage in the conversation for all five, only two. It is roughly fifteen thousand square feet. It's roughly the size of, the size of Stardust when it comes to the footprint. There is currently sixteen parking stalls at Stardust. Really, for a twenty-two room, for a twenty-two-room apartment complex, we would need at least twenty-two stalls plus services. Just the parking lot, you were right, the parking lot needed to be expanded. The needs to make that property nicer, additional property would be, additional footprint would be necessary. So our recommendation would have been to purchase two additional lots. The benefit of the timeline on this one was also being able to cover the purchase with Home Key funds.
Right. Yeah, and forgive me for not knowing this. Is that annexed, that's annexed into the city as well?
Actually, neither property is, it is county land. So their conversation on the, on the annex aren't, it's not there yet. They're both in county.
Yeah. And I'm sure it's part of the island annexations. So I, yeah, I agree with the chair. I think this is probably a good investment if the state will let us do it without the, the anchor project that was, you know, the affordable house.
We might as well need it eventually. We might as well be middleman.
You know, and, and it wouldn't be a bad satellite location for services in that area. So, yeah.
What we would need to check, so we were, the need for the property was there, and we were going to try to obtain the funds even if Home Key didn't happen. I don't know if Home Key funds would cover it if we don't have the anchor project. So I do want to give you that.
And I, I have those same concerns because I, without that anchor project, I just don't see it having the nexus to be able to, to expend those funds.
But it keeps the door open, maybe?
Um, yeah. Could, could we add additional language to where, you know, if that other project does work?
If you author, so part of it is because it's not final yet. I've made an offer. It was, it's not solid yet. If you authorize the first two actions, I can be back and we can then figure out. Your last action, I'm still trying to digest it to be perfectly frank, because it passed three-fifths. The budget change didn't pass, but you actually technically authorized me to purchase the motel. So I don't, I mean, I can't exercise it without the actual funding. But in the, if you approve this one, I can be back with the third, when it's actually negotiated, and we can caveat it if there's no funding available. It just goes away.
Do that, and then if you guys go on, possible emergency meeting on December thirtieth in case people change their mind. November, December thirtieth, November thirtieth.
Yeah, because we, yeah, yeah, November thirtieth or December first. You'd have to know by this-
It closes as the first, right?
Does it close at first?
December second, the property, the original property has to be closed.
Yeah, November thirtieth or December first.
We have a motion on the table that says-
I'll do that.
Who was presented with a possible special meeting on December first to revisit the first item B. This loaded down.
Excuse me. I believe it's just A and B, not C. C is actually approving the purchase agreement. Is that an accurate statement of your motion, Supervisor?
Yes.
Okay.
But-
Can you, can-
Keep in mind, we could have a special meeting on December first.
Correct.
Not included in the motion.
Yeah, so, but the only thing is, is it, it reserves our ability to complete the purchase department. So this opens a door for negotiations. It just doesn't, it closes the door for the actual purchase.
Right.
So if we don't have a special meeting on November thirtieth or December first, then that third item just never happens.
Well, or we're big buy the property, give it to KCIO, and we're good.
Yeah.
We stay out of it.
Yeah, that's the, that's the other.
Okay, so motion, second. Second by Supervisor Peterson. Motion made. First motion by Supervisor Nevs. Second by Supervisor Peterson. Madam Court, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Yeah.
Craig Peterson.
Hi.
Doug Braboon.
Yes.
Richard Fagundis.
No.
I didn't get, was it yes or no?
That was a no, Mr. Chair.
A what?
That was a no, Mr. Chair.
Three in favor, two against. This item-
It passed.
Three-two vote, it passes. Okay, thank you. We're going to go back to our regular scheduled meetings, and we're on item number F, Public Works Department. And we have Dominic.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of, members of the board, Dominic Tiberuski, Public Works. And before you this morning, to request approval of track seven fifty-six, Phase Five Subdivision Improvement Agreement, and authorize the chairman of the board to execute the agreement. Tentative track map seven fifty-six was approved by the Kings County Advisory Agency on May fifth of two thousand and three, and phases one through four dash two of this subdivision have been completed with phase four dash three in the works by developer Sherman Spradling. A separate developer, Jerry Irons, is moving forward with phase five and has requested this agreement so he may begin construction on the improvements. This phase of the track will include an additional thirty-eight lots for the community of Armona. Can costs for these improvements will be recruit, recouped through the various development fees, and at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions if, if you have any.
Any question or comments? It's a good project. Move forward, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Nevs. Second by Supervisor Peterson. Madam Court, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Braboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Hi.
Doug Braboon.
Yes.
Richard Fagundis.
Yes.
Okay, very good. And we're going to go on now to Administration. So Rebecca Campbell.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have one more.
I'm sorry, item two. Item two, sorry.
No, no problem. No problem. So the second item is request approval of an agreement with more twining associates to provide geotechnical engineering, materials testing, and construction inspection services for the sheriff's operations building project. Authorizing the chairman to sign the agreement and authorize the public works director or chief engineer to approve additional costs up to ten percent of the contract amount. An RFP for professional services was issued on October twenty-seventh of this year with proposals being submitted November tenth. Four firms submitted with more twining being selected as they provided the most thorough and comprehensive response, demonstrating their ability to meet the needs of the solicitation. The contract will be administered on a time and materials basis with a not-to-exceed amount of ninety-two thousand one hundred and ten dollars. However, we will make every effort to reduce cost through efficient management. And again, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dominic. Any question or comments? Kind of goes together. Supervisor Fagundis makes a motion.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Peterson. Madam Court, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Braboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Yes.
It has passed, and five in favor. Thank you very much, Dominic.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to go to Administration, and Rebecca Campbell, you want to start this off?
Yes, I would, and I'm going to ask Domingo Cruz to come on the line, and he's going to present the report.
I'm online. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good morning. Again, Domingo Cruz, one of your administrative analysts in the administrative office. So this morning, I'm requesting that your board approve the Public Safety Realignment and Post-Release Community Supervision two thousand and twenty plan for submission to the Board of State and Community Corrections to meet the requirement of the Public Safety Realignment Act, Assembly Bill one oh nine, or AP one oh nine. So the formation and update of this plan was in cooperation with all the safety partners. Also, this plan was approved by the Kings County Community Corrections Fundship, where the CCP Committee during their meeting on November ninth, two thousand and twenty, which composed of the two probation officers, the chair, sheriff, coroner, and chief of police, represented by annual police chief, district attorney, public defender, presiding judge of the superior court or designate, and behavioral health director. This action will not have an impact to the general fund. The public safety realignment allocations were adopted by your board during the budget hearing on September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, in the amount of eleven million, hundred seventy-two thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars. Changes in funding allocated to the county for the current year due to coronavirus disease two thousand and nineteen or COVID-nineteen include a reduction of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars from the previous year. This is not including the growth fund allocation, which is zero this year. So last fiscal year, the county was allocated six hundred and sixty-three thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars in growth allocation. So Assembly Bill one oh nine took effect on October one, two thousand and eleven, which transferred responsibility for supervising specific low-level inmates and parolees from the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation to the counties. So since the last plan update, probation departments saw an increase under post-release community supervision or PRCS population due to COVID-nineteen, which accelerated releases from state prison to slow the spread of the virus within the prison walls. The department saw approximately one hundred early releases due to the state prisons lowering their populations. This increase put a significant strain on their staff to ensure these releases were provided the necessary services and supervision, as they were often released on the weekend, requiring staff to be ready to respond at a moment's notice. The program funding, which started last fiscal year with the county's local justice partners, were discontinued due to COVID-nineteen economic funding impact. The goal of the collaborative effort was to assist in improving the quality of life in the community by reducing crimes committed by individuals subject to PRCS. The contract with the job training office is the only one that will continue to operate in this fiscal year. That is, they saw positive impacts, including increased numbers of clients, securing jobs, and remaining crime-free. The sheriff's office also saw an increase in the number of inmates beginning early in two thousand and twenty, which is due to COVID-nineteen virus and the state prisons closing inmate reception centers. The population covered approximately five hundred inmates in above all year. The overcrowding caused by COVID-nineteen resulted in a handful of inmates being released early. So with, with that, I respectfully request that your board approve the Public Safety Realignment and Post-Release Community Supervision two thousand and twenty plan. Thank you.
Any question or comments? Thank you, Domingo.
If there's none, move for adoption.
Moved by Supervisor Peterson. Second by Supervisor Fagundis. Madam Court, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Braboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Hi.
Richard Fagundis.
Five in favor. Thank you, Domingo, Domingo, for your presentation. Now we have Kiri Martinez.
Good morning, board members. Kiri Martinez, Administration. On September twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty, by resolution, your board adopted the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one budget. Administration, the District Attorney's Office, Human Service Agency, and the sheriff's office have been working together to address some changes, some budget changes to their department. The following changes are proposed. In the sheriff's office during budget hearings, administration staff advised the board that there would be some adjustments to, at a later time, due to unknown funding streams, specifically in the courts. This budget unit has always been fully funded by the courts. However, this year, there was a unreimbursed cost to the general fund. The court's security bailiff division does propose a slight restructure of personnel to offset a dwindling revenue stream. The sheriff's office is requesting to delete the last remaining deputy sheriff two position from the trial court funding budget, along with unfunding a senior deputy sheriff position from this budget unit. In addition, they would like to add one deputy sheriff bailiff one-two. This change would save a substantial amount of monies in salary savings. The district attorney's office also has a few changes. For fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, the county had merged onto a new finance system, and this was the first time ever that we produced a budget book from that finance system, and it's, you have a copy of it in front of you. At the beginning of June two thousand and twenty, the county was using a third-party vendor to produce those reports that generate that budget book, a process that administration does annually. During this time, those reports produced from a third-party vendor software was lump summing together special pays and overtime. Payroll wanted to keep those two separate accounts separately to, for more transparency. So moving forward, we will keep those lines separate, but special amounts were not included in the final adopted budget for the district attorney's office. Our current finance system is now able to generate those reports, as seen in your budget book that you have in front of you. Due to this item, administration is requesting to increase the district attorney's allocation. In addition, it is requested to purchase sixteen replacement laptops for their office. These sixteen laptops are due for replacement. And lastly, in the human services agency, based on changing needs, the department is seeking to add four positions and delete four positions, so there would be no changes in the amount of overall positions. Two of those positions are connected to the expanding housing and supportive services unit. This will include the addition of one employment training supervisor and one employment training worker one-two for the increased workload. One human services supervisor is being added to address the immediate need to decrease the supervision ratio for clerical staff, and one employment training worker one-two will be added to backfill an employment training worker three, who will be performing case review duty to implement new program requirements. To offset these new positions, the department will be eliminating a one-point O F T work crew supervisor and three-point O F T office assistants one-two positions. These positions, positions are currently vacant. The overall impact to the general fund will result in a savings of a hundred and thirty thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. The savings will be from the sheriff's court savings on the salary savings. The increased allocation of district attorney's budget will be transferred from the general fund contingencies in the amount of twenty-nine thousand four hundred and thirty-two. Also, eighteen thousand four hundred and sixty-four will come from the sheriff's coronavirus relief funds that will be transferred to the district attorneys to purchase eight laptops. The other eight laptops costing nineteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-four were repurchased from the information technology fund. The position changes in the human services were already budgeted in the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, so there is no fiscal impact for those budget changes. At this time, I request to delete a one-point O F T deputy sheriff one-two, allocate one-point O deputy sheriff bailiff one-two, and be authorizing the following position changes in human services. Allocate one-point O F T employment and training supervisor, and allocate two-point O F T employment and training worker one slash two, and allocate one-point O F T human services office supervisor, and delete three-point O office assistant one-two, and delete one-point O work crew supervisor, and C, adopt a budget change for the district attorney's office.
Thank you. My question would be, did the district attorney get, email this to him, or is he going to come up and say he wasn't notified?
We've been working with Veronica Mello, their fiscal analyst, and-
Veronica or the district attorney?
Both.
Okay, so long as we know, we don't want to have him come saying he wasn't notified here. So that would be my only question. Seemed to be a common thread here. So as long as the email's working, we're all good. Any questions, comments? Move for adoption. Moved by Supervisor Peterson.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Nevs. Madam Court, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Braboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Hi.
Richard Fagundis.
Five in favor. Thank you very much. Good luck. Wish you guys all the best. We're going to move on now. Okay, so this is going to take a while, or you want to go take a little lunch break? Give everybody, because we got people that are going to talk. So you want to have a lunch break and come back at twelve-thirty-five, and then start fresh, or just motor through it?
Are you talking about H?
Yes.
That's going to take a long time?
I don't know.
I think it'll take at least twenty minutes.
I can do twenty minutes.
Or more.
You want to bet some money on that?
That's the minimum.
That's the minimum.
That's not the maximum.
Is everybody, everybody's good to go to, to motor through it?
Go and make it quick.
We're on item number H, Administration, Rebecca Campbell.
Okay, we're done.
Hi.
Okay, so this is a weekly update to your board on COVID-nineteen and the pandemic, talking about a few things with the state notifying your board. I don't have any federal updates today, although there are negotiations occurring, and then I'll turn it over to Sonia and then to Ed Hill for a public health update. So just talking about the state, the governor did come on since our last board meeting a couple of times and talked about he, he's putting the emergency brake on reopening, and there were about twenty-nine counties, a total of forty-one, that have moved back into the purple tier. So with that, he also came out with new updated mask guidance this week, and that new guidance is stricter guidance that requires people to wear a face covering within six feet of another person outside the home with certain expectations. The state also issued new guidance on holiday gatherings. California Health and Human Services Secretary Dr. Mark Galley announced what has been reported as a curfew for the purple tier counties. And what that means for counties is that as of last Saturday, state public health order generally prohibits non-essential work and gatherings between the hours of ten p.m. and then five a.m. It applies to all counties within the purple tier. It went into effect at ten p.m. on Saturday. Gatherings between more than one household are prohibited between ten p.m. and five a.m. Non-essential businesses must close between ten p.m. and five a.m., but restaurants may continue to offer takeout food past ten p.m. It's not a curfew for individuals or members of the same household, but instead applies only to gatherings or activities with members of other households. People from the same household may engage in activities outside the home between ten p.m. and five a.m. The order is in effect until five a.m. on December twenty-one. If the county is subsequently placed in the purple tier, it will have two days to implement the order. The order may be enforced locally and by state entities. The governor also let us know that they will be coming out with further guidance related to outdoor tents for dining to assist restaurants with outdoor operations, so we'll keep an eye out for that. Cal OSHA, I want to mention that at their board meeting on November nineteenth, the California Occupational Safety and Health Standards Board unanimously voted for emergency COVID-nineteen rule outlining steps for employers must take to prevent the disease spread within the workplace, including screening, social distancing, ventilation, and deep cleaning measures, as well as how to respond to a workplace outbreak. The twenty-one-page regulation would require employers to, one, quickly notify employees and independent contractors who may have been exposed at the workplace; two, offer them testing during working hours at no cost. In addition, after a major outbreak defined as twenty or more cases in a thirty-day period, employers would have to offer twice-weekly testing. The regulations are generally consistent with what has already been set forth by the state for various industries. So the next step of that, the emergency regulations would have to be reviewed by the Office of Administrative Law, and within ten days after approval by that office would take effect immediately. So we'll keep an eye, eye out for that as well.
on since our last board meeting a couple of times and talked about, he's putting the emergency break on reopening, and there were about 29 counties, a total of 41, that have moved back into the purple tier. So with that, he also came out with new updated mask guidance this week, and that new guidance is stricter guidance that requires people to wear a face covering within six feet of another person outside the home with certain expectations. The state also issued new guidance on holiday gatherings. California Health and Human Services Secretary, Dr. Mark Galley, announced what has been reported as a curfew for the purple-tier counties. And what that means for counties is that, as of last Saturday, state public health order generally prohibits non-essential work and gatherings between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m. It applies to all counties within the purple tier. It went into effect at 10:00 p.m. on Saturday. Gatherings between more than one household are prohibited between 10:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m. Non-essential businesses must close between 10:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m., but restaurants may continue to offer takeout food past 10:00 p.m. It's not a curfew for individuals or members of the same household, but instead applies only to gatherings or activities with members of other households. People from the same household may engage in activities outside the home between 10:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m. The order is in effect until 5:00 a.m. on December 21. If the county is subsequently placed in the purple tier, it will have two days to implement the order. The order may be enforced locally and by state entities. The Governor also let us know that they will be coming out with further guidance related to outdoor tents for dining to assist restaurants with outdoor operations, so we'll keep an eye out for that. Cal OSHA, I want to mention that at their board meeting on November 19, the California Occupational Safety and Health Standards Board unanimously voted for emergency COVID-19 rule outlining steps for employers must take to prevent the disease spread within the workplace, including screening, social distancing, ventilation, and deep cleaning measures, as well as how to respond to a workplace outbreak. The 21-page regulation would require employers to, one, quickly notify employees and independent contractors who may have been exposed at the workplace, two, offer them testing during working hours at no cost. In addition, after a major outbreak defined as 21 or more cases in a 30-day period, employers would have to offer twice-weekly testing. The regulations are generally consistent with what has already been set forth by the state for various industries. So the next step of that, the emergency regulations would have to be reviewed by the Office of Administrative Law, and within 10 days after approval by that office would take effect immediately. So we'll keep an eye out for that as well. The Governor also announced additional funding for Project Room Key, $62 million in one-time funds. Our Human Services Director will give an update on that on her end. Also, the Governor announced the final report from the Task Force on Business and Jobs Recovery is out, and those leaders are working with the Governor's Chief of Staff and O'Leary to provide guidance and advice to the state to help rebuild California's economy. And then, small businesses, there's also, I wanted to mention that the Governor also launched a new program called the California Rebuilding Fund to help small businesses recover from economic crisis. The fund is a public-private partnership that will direct capital from public, private, and resources to community development financial institutes with the goal of improving assistance under banked small businesses. So those businesses could apply for a loan under www.ca-loanfund.org, and that application is open. Okay, so county updates. We are still operating as we have. We're also, I'm submitting the monthly attestation to the Department of Finance that we are adhering to the state guidelines. Also, I wanted to talk about the Coronavirus Relief Funds. I wanted to let the Board know that we've been able to fully claim over the $15.6 million of Coronavirus Relief Funds. We've been able to do that through actual expenses and through substantially dedicated time. I do want to notify your Board, though, that the Health Department, out of their allocation, won't spend approximately $4 million by December 30. However, we have been able to claim that amount, our full grant amount. So I want to let the Board know that it would, it would be safe to leave those funds in the Health Department budget, and I want to talk about some of the upcoming needs that the Health Department will have going forward in order to address the pandemic. They are going to need nursing staff for case investigation. They're going to want to continue testing for the virus. The testing for OptumServe runs through April 21, so they would want to continue that, those testing efforts. They would want to continue the contact tracing that they're doing. They would want to continue the education that they're doing to the community. They would want to move forward with rapid PCR testing, and so they would want to continue the contract with KCao for the Essential Workers' Isolation Support Program. Also, they, we would want to keep on the staff that we allocated there at the end of June, the six employees. We would want to keep them beyond December 30. So the total of all that, and also I wanted to mention that they would want to have those funds for vaccine distribution. So the total of that whole estimate is about $11.6 million to continue fighting this virus from the Health Department. So I want to mention that.
Will I talk about how he could do that without spending it before the deadline?
We've already been able to claim it, so now we don't have to worry about the deadline. We've been able to claim it. We're good with the State Department of Finance. We may be audited, but we're confident in our reporting. So setting that aside, there's $4 million of monies in the Health Department's budget that won't be spent before December 30, but we're asking to keep it there so we can continue fighting the virus. I also want to mention to your Board, I did speak with the Workforce and Economic Development Director, Lance Lippincott, and he's been able to push out that money. He's still working on it and finalizing some of those grants, but I said, well, how's that going? He says he, he could probably push out a million dollars more. So I just wanted to give your Board that information as well.
And I think the billion dollars towards businesses goes a long way. You know, there's a lot of businesses that have been affected by the government's implementation on, you know, shutting businesses down. It's just going to show since March that the virus is spreading whether businesses are open or closed, and, you know, here we are coming up upon our property tax statements are due December 10. You know, we had this problem April 10, when we shut down the first time, and we had a mandatory 14-day shutdown if people wanted us to waive the property tax payments. Well, I know as a landowner and a business owner that I'm not getting income since March because of the decisions made by the government, and I think if we have money, businesses out there still in need, we should take care of them, because apparently we can keep putting money at government and it doesn't go anywhere. The virus is still here. It doesn't understand whether the government's in control or the people are in control. I think the responsibility relies on the people. The effect on the businesses is detrimental and non-reversible. I think we should take care of the remainder of the people that are out there. I think a million dollars or less could take care of what's already applied, and we'd be in good shape. As far as testing goes, you know, we're doing testing. We had the free government testing was taken from us, given to the Mid East or back east someplace. We're doing a good job. We're still, you know, not getting the number we'd like to, but we're still better than any other county in the state of California. I think we're doing great. If we have a million dollars that Lance Lippincott can have in his department, I'd like to make a motion that we support him, and I think the Health Department will survive no matter what. We spent a lot of money on contact tracing. We spent a lot of money on getting it out there, and we're still blowing up. The people that don't believe, don't believe, but we need to take care of people that were affected by our decision to shut the businesses down back in March, and we got a few people that are lagging that they get taken care of. I think it's time now to make that choice. So that's my motion.
For the record, well, I was hoping to get more detailed, because I could agree with you.
Hold it for a while.
Yeah, yeah, no, because I'd like to see a chart of this 4 million, where it's coming, what pots, all of that, all of that, because again, as much as I want, as I want to get there, the CAO agreed to agendize with specific language things we would be doing under this item, instead of being so general and vague and giving the transparency, being more transparent on the issue under COVID. Remember that, month and a half ago?
Yes, that's what I'm doing today. We can put together a chart if you'd like to see a chart.
I'm saying that actions that we take under that would be laid out to the public. For example, for example, as much as I support this, the Chairman's motion is not. You follow me? And we talked about that, not doing, not, not making these types of big decisions without it being laid out on the agenda.
I wasn't, I'm just here to give your Board an update on what we've, we've been working on it. We've been trying to come up with where they're at with their spending.
You're right. Okay.
I just wanted to get it off my mind before I forgot, you know.
You wanted what?
I just wanted to get it off my mind before I forgot.
Oh, yeah.
I'm going to bring it up at any point.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. So the other thing I wanted to update your Board on was county protocols. So wanted to let your Board know that we're revising our county protocols, the employee protocols, to incorporate the new, what we're assessing, the new Cal OSHA regulations. We want to make sure that that is all covered, and then also want to make sure that our protocols address the quarantining periods that are recommended by health. Right, currently, they do not, so we want to make sure that within our own workforce and as cases pop up and as folks are exposed, we want to make sure that they are safe. So I wanted to give your Board an update on that. With that, I would ask, perhaps we'll have Ed Hill come on first, and then we'll go to you.
Morning, Ed. You still on the line?
We've been lunch.
Ed, you need to unmute yourself?
There it is. I apologize. You'd think I'd be used to this by now. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. Ed Hill, Public Health.
Good morning. Sound good.
I'd like to start my report, as I always do, by going over the basic practices that will keep all of us safe from the spread of communicable disease such as COVID. Those are wash your hands for 20 seconds or more. Don't touch your face with unwashed hands. Stay home if you're sick. Again, this is a huge one. We're seeing more and more cases associated with people that go to work when they are sick and then find out they're COVID a day or two later. Stay hydrated with water, and then, of course, wear face coverings to protect yourself and your loved ones. Our current numbers for the county, we have currently collected 89,667 samples. We have 393 results pending. We're currently monitoring 2,051 individuals. Our current total cases since the outbreak began for the community is 500, or excuse me, 5,401, unfortunately with 77 deaths. Total recovered is 4,442, and active cases are at 889. Skilled nursing facilities are starting to have some more cases associated with them. We've seen a small increase. We now have a total of 185 cases with seven active, 177 recovered, and unfortunately, 24 deaths. The prison outbreaks continue to be an issue, and we continue to work with the state on this. Corcoran is now at 487 cases. Avonel State Prison is 3,132, and SADF is at 1,564, and this includes inmates and staff. They have collected 53,289 samples. They currently have 1,256 tests pending. They currently have 1,162 active cases with 3,679 recovered, and unfortunately, one new death, which brings their death total to 10. They currently have seven individuals hospitalized, those seven, or excuse me, eight hospitalized, seven in Bakersfield and one in Hanford. Our concern still remains. Our concerns are over the possible surge that it could create in our local healthcare system, as well as the staff bringing the disease home to their families, which then perpetuates the spread through the community. We currently continue to watch hospital data very closely. As of yesterday, the local hospital had 43 COVID patients. It's an increase of 10 from the previous week. Seven of them are in the intensive care unit. They stated that they are fine with PPE and medications right now, but we will continue to support them and any requests that they make moving forward. The Porterville Development Center alternate care site, again, remains in warm state, which means it supposedly could be stood up in 72 hours. However, we asked the Unified Support Team for clarification because there is a report in a Cal OES document indicating that 65% of the physical resources had been moved out of that facility, so we sought clarification, and we hope to get an answer soon. We're still currently maintaining 60-day supply of PPE for all of our healthcare facilities. We have started to schedule regular calls with the hospital to touch base on surge planning moving forward, as we are seeing an increase throughout, locally and throughout the region, not only in med-surge admissions, but also in intensive care admissions. We want to make sure that the triggers that were established when the original attestation was submitted all those days ago still hold true, and to take into any considerations or new information that's been, that's being presented from lessons learned in other areas. On our last Unified Support Team call, we did ask the state to consider requesting the DMAT Support Team again, which was a huge help when that DOD team was here several months ago. However, I just don't want to get our hopes up because the circumstances have changed considerably since their demobilization. Back then, there was not nationwide community spread, but that is not the case any longer. We do have nationwide community spread now of the virus. We have another call with the Unified Support Team tonight to talk about surge planning, not only locally, but throughout OES Region 5, and I'll update your Board when I hear more information on that. The mobile testing program scheduled for this week, Monday, it was Operation Gobble in Corcoran in the morning, and then in Avonel in the afternoon. It was a successful event. Today, it is at Lamora High School. Wednesday, it'll be at Armona Elementary. Thursday, it will be off for Thanksgiving, and Friday is its normal day off, so it will be off for those two days. Saturday, it will be in downtown Hanford at the Civic Center Park, and Sunday, we are still trying to identify location, and once we do, we will update the flyer. As mentioned last week, the federal HHS testing resource, I'm talking about the staff, testing kits and labs, were deployed somewhere else in the Midwest. Their last day was, here was on November 19 of last week, and we have transitioned completely over to Public Health taking over the testing. We've been testing a lot lately, which is good news, over the weekend, since we switched. We collected 153 samples on Saturday and 170 on Sunday. And as a reminder, we have switched over to the state's lab, the PerkinElmer lab in Valencia, and the state testing kits. The pending item of preregistration for this color system, which is the software that individuals use to register for the test, has been taken care of. However, there are a couple hiccups and some gaps that we need to work through for starters. If you visit the color website, we don't show up as an option yet, so you can't use their website to register if you don't have a QR-capable camera. But if you do have a QR-capable camera, when you complete the form, it doesn't give you any directions or appointments, and most people are looking for an appointment once you finish that registration. But you are free to show up at any of the testing sites and submit your sample, but again, it doesn't give you that direction or that isn't clear, so we're working with them to clean all of that up, as well as we're going to add more clear language on our flyer because of the case. There is no requirement for preregistration. You can do, and again, yes.
So on the QR part of the cam, on the camera part, I understand how it works, but sometimes you need two devices to do that. You have to have one device to take a picture of the QR deal. How do you, how do you do that?
Yeah, I haven't encountered that. I'm sorry. Could you describe that again?
So if you're on your, say you're on your iPhone, and you come up to your page, and you got to, you can take a picture of the QR deal, but you need another device to do that with. You can't do it from your own phone. I mean, unless there's a way, I'm not doing it right. You have to bring it up on someone else's phone. Adam? Aaron? Sorry?
You can save it. So actually, on any Android device running Android 7.0 or iOS device running iOS 8.0, if you open the camera app, you don't actually have to take the picture. It will automatically detect there's a QR code. A dropdown will appear saying, "Open QR Code," and it'll open up to the proper website.
Okay, so what he's saying is, I know what you're saying, Sue, because I got to do it. I would have to say, hey, Sue, bring up the flyer, and then I would use my phone, point it at his phone, to get the QR code to get there. I think the Chairman's asking, is there a way to do it by going on the county site? You see the QR code. Can you right-click or something to get there off that, or you just have to point that camera?
It should be hyperlink, typically, because that's all a QR code is, is a visual hyperlink. So you should be able to either hold or right-click if you're on a computer, and it should open.
I haven't tried that.
Yeah, Chairman Boone through the chair. When I register, I simply point my phone at the computer monitor where the QR code is, and it brings up the link for me to try to.
Two devices.
Yeah.
Homeless people don't have two devices. People with money have no two devices, unless you have another person there you can do it from. That's what my question was. How do you do that?
Exactly.
I'm sorry. I was just going to say to that point, I know at the Catholic Church site, when we ran into that problem, I miss trail, your staff just printed out a bunch of flyers and enlarged it, and we posted them around the canopy, and we asked people just to go over there and point their camera at that QR code. But, but again, I get what the Chairman is saying.
Yes, for those individuals, and again, that was something that I was talking about earlier, where we have to be more clear that there is no requirement for preregistration because there are going to be individuals that don't have that capability, but that's not going to preclude them from being able to test, because they can still just be a walk-up tester, and our staff will use their devices there to register the patients onsite to collect the sample.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
No worries. Our program that's designed to support the essential workforce in their isolation quarantine is currently serving 29 households with a total of 96 households served and with a total of 143 referrals. This will be huge moving forward. This program has fully spun up to full capabilities now, and with the increasing cases that we see moving forward, it'll be important to continue this program and support that isolation quarantine support so that individuals have the ability to do that successfully without having to leave the home, which would, again, increase the potential for spread of the virus. As before, we've been holding regular scheduled calls with the Unified Support Team, and we work through any pending issues. Again, we have really pushed the idea that the prisons are a big concern in our county, and we've asked them to push this much further up the food chain. I'm not sure what will come of it, but we'll continue to push that those changes at CDC are, the way that they staff and the changes that they don't implement are affecting us, and we would like to see change there as well. Our planning efforts for the possible release of the COVID-19 vaccine continue. We have regularly scheduled calls. As a matter of fact, there's one today. We're in the process of purchasing all the necessary equipment for the storage of the vaccine, which at this time includes super-subzero freezers. We are purchasing those freezers for both us and the hospital. for both us and the hospital, and the state has begun to identify the priority populations, which I reported last week. That hasn't changed. It's still hospitals, skilled nursing facilities, first responders, and individuals of that nature that support those individuals, so that they can be vaccinated first. But as we get more information, I will continue to update your board. I saw that there have been some news stories that counties are anticipating receiving the vaccine in December. I don't think that's very accurate. As we know, the vaccine is likely going to be distributed by the vendors, or the pharmaceutical companies in December, and the state has already announced that they will want to do their own trials and look at the vaccine before it will be distributed throughout the state. Again, I've been asking the questions if that is happening concurrently, but I have not received an answer, but as soon as I do, I will update your board. Our current numbers for the state metrics this week are, our new cases per one hundred thousand is at twelve point six, which means it is in the purple tier criteria, and we continue to see increasing numbers. Just as a reminder, in order to meet the state's red tier criteria, we need to see eleven cases or less a day, but unfortunately, our numbers are now reaching the sixties and seventies new cases a day, again, which we saw much earlier in the year. Our overall testing positivity today is at four point nine percent, and our overall testing positivity in the lowest quartile of the Healthy Place Index is at three point three percent this morning. This means our new cases per hundred thousand is in the purple teal tier, but our overall testing positivity, and our testing positivity in the lowest quartile in the Healthy Places Index, still meets the orange tier criteria. Our test per hundred thousand is currently at four hundred and fifty-five daily average, and this is amazing. As Supervisor Verboon pointed out, we are doing great on testing. We are outperforming many of the other counties in the state, and it's something that I really hope that we can continue. I also would like to point out that if you look at the state's numbers, there's sometimes a confusion between the four hundred and fifty-five, because there's also a number that lingers out there of eight hundred and ninety tests per day. The difference between the two, if you look closely at it, is one includes inmates testing, and the other one does not, and the lower number is the testing that we're doing in the community. For cases in the county, most of our cases that we're seeing are community transmission, transmission through gatherings and community spread, and then it's continued spread through household contacts. We have not seen any isolated outbreaks within the associated single sectors at this time. So again, you know, my message remains the same. We really want to urge people not to get out, not to get in groups, and not to participate in the behaviors that are known to spread the virus. As Supervisor Verboon mentioned earlier, this is really on the individuals, and unfortunately, our businesses are being held accountable for the actions of individuals, and it's, you know, not really popular, and it's not moving the county in the, the direction we would like to go. I'm not going to get into the health officer issued by the state, or the, excuse me, the health officer order issued by the state, as Ms. Campbell already went over that, but I do want to close out with, during the holidays, the King's County Department of Public Health plans to remain staff for new case notification, case investigation, and contact tracing for Thanksgiving and the following Friday, but as mentioned earlier, the mobile unit will not be testing. For the Christmas closure, we will remain staff for new case notification, case investigation, and contact tracing, and the mobile unit will continue to testing, with the exception of Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, and New Year's Day. The OptumServe site, which is at the day reporting center, will be closed during Thanksgiving, but will open during normal hours this Friday and Saturday as normal, and we have not heard of any changes for the Christmas or New Year's holiday for that testing site, but I will update your board as soon as I learn of anything. This concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I guess, Mr. Chair, just a couple. I know we're in a hurry. Hey, hey, Mr. Hill, you said you had a Sunday open. Are there any challenges to getting testing regularly in Kettleman City? Is it, is it meeting your quota as far as having the resource there for a couple hours?
Supervisor Valley through the chair, there is no challenge there, other than a possible location. In the past, we have used the library and the fire department, and I'm happy to put the mobile unit there as well, or if you can help us identify another location that's more centralized, we'd be happy.
I, I think for now that, that works, and thank you. That, I get, I get probably out of the four communities in my district, that's the one that I keep getting asked about, and, and so as I haven't kept up with your schedule, I, I, I don't know if you're there once a week, but, but if it's possible to be there at least once every ten days, it sounds like that would be appreciated by the community. And then, are you able to tell us, I mean, I put up seven hundred turkeys yesterday for turkeys and test, and how did we, how did we do yesterday? Do you have numbers?
Thank you, Supervisor Valley through the chair. Yes, I do. Those efforts, and you inviting us to that event, we were able to collect a hundred and eighty-eight examples, so that's most appreciated.
All right. Hey, good job, and, and kudos to his staff, Ms. Chair. They're motivated. They were having fun. They like when they're around somewhere where there's a lot of people who want to test, and I think the staff's motivation, people around them feel that, and, and I saw a lot of people come up and get tested, but they had a good time yesterday. The, the only other, the only other thing that I would just add to the, to the conversation is that as we start talking about these monies, and I appreciate the CAO saying that, you know, we'd like to keep these monies for COVID-related, and especially, especially on the vaccine, Mr. Hill, maybe you can talk a little bit about that, just on the priority of that moving forward, because I believe, unless I'm wrong, the, the opinion that I'm agreeing with is that just, just because the vaccine is here, right, not everyone's going to rush out to come get it, or they're going to meet your vaccination team with open arms, just like we're having challenges on testing. Vaccination is going to have challenges as well. So when you're talking about how many Americans we've tested since March, the last number I've heard is one hundred and thirty million tests, and when I just look at Kings County, and the efforts to get people to test, and in some cases, begging people to test, and, and offering turkeys and all this, so since March to now, you have a hundred and thirty million people tested. When we talk about vaccinating, the vaccination, we're talking about three hundred and thirty Americans. So, March to December, a hundred and thirty million. How quick do you think that vaccination's going to roll out to three hundred and thirty Americans, and do you believe we are going to need just as much of the same resources to follow some type of plan or model that is successful to draw people in, to vaccinate them? Or do, or do you, or do you think contrary to that, hey, once we, the county says we have vaccinations, you know, is this, are people going to line up? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Valley through the chair, I'm going to try and remember all the questions, so please let me know if I miss one of them. Off the top, the vaccine availability will be extremely limited at first. That's why the feds and the state will pretty much dictate who gets what from the beginning. This is similar to what they've done with the H1N1 vaccine, when we went through H1N1 all those years ago. In addition to that, and piggybacking on that statement, the, you're absolutely correct, that just as with the motivation that it took, and the, and the constant PR, and requesting, and the help from all of our community partners and businesses, and your board, to get people to get tested, we will have to do the same for the vaccine. For example, again, of that is H1N1. There are still individuals that never got vaccinated. That virus is still alive and moving around. Plus, there will be a lot of uncertainty over the vaccine and its effectiveness. There's a lot of media on that, whether it will be effective or not, which will sway individual's mindset and their approach to the vaccine. Because of that, we will also need to continue the testing, because, as mentioned before, the COVID won't go away just because the vaccine is released. Those who get the vaccine will be a better chance of finning off the disease, as those who won't will be more susceptible, and we will still have to test those individuals. When it comes to staffing for vaccination, the testing has become very simplified, so much so that we don't need that high level of a licensure to help administer the testing on the vaccine. That is not going to be the case, because these are actual individuals that will have to give shots, so they will require a higher licensure. Plus, it'll be a short timeframe, hopefully, meaning that when the vaccine is finally being produced at levels where we can give them, we would not want to hire full-time staff that we would later have to let go. So contract nursing is the best route to go in that process, which we have been using contract nursing since we were approved and given CARES Act funds. We would have to continue that until the vaccination has been distributed widely enough throughout the county. I believe that was all your questions, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any more questions or comments?
Yes, we did find out that the twenty thousand dollar public safety daycare program is not an eligible expense under the Coronavirus Relief Act, so I would request direction from your board to bring back an item with general fund dollars to fund that program. And then I'll turn it over to Sonia.
It wasn't a creative way to figure that out? I thought we can spend it on anything that had a impact, a negative impact, coronavirus-related.
Not that we saw, no.
Hmm, that's interesting.
Hey, Sonia, it's all yours.
Yes, I have an update for you on two different projects. So one is the sixty-two million that were mentioned for Project Room Key. That is an allocation that the state announced at the tail end of last week. It is, because it's an allocation, we get a portion of it based on our Project Room Key rooms back in July. So, based on that, we would get two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars from the sixty-two million. That is usually how the funding for these things works, that it's a portion of an allocation. It is specifically to continue Project Room Key. If your board recalls back in September, you voted for additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this project. That got us through end of February. What we're currently spending on Project Room Key is three hundred and fifty thousand a month for sheltering. The reason that we have sufficient funding in February is only if FEMA funds, so we're claiming seventy-five percent of the cost to FEMA. If FEMA funds continue, we're okay through February. If there is no FEMA, the two hundred and seventy-seven would cover even a month of cost. So, really, we're going to look at our Project Room Key costs and continue it as long as we can. This would potentially push us for three months if the FEMA continues on a monthly basis, or a single month, so past February into March. We're still actively pursuing, trying to figure out a replacement for Project Room Key, because what we're doing currently helps during the coronavirus time. It does not, but it does not meet a long-term need of a shelter. So we need, we still need to grapple with, how do we fund a shelter that's beyond what, what our county currently has in capacity? Whether these funds can help with that, I'm not certain yet, but we're going to look into that. So that's on the sixty-two million. Second piece I'm going to give you an update on is Project Home Key, so permanent housing. I really want to separate these two, because thirty-seven thousand people in this county qualify for low-income permanent housing. We have that much need. And where we are currently is of the four thousand units that the county said four years ago, the county and the city said four years ago that we want to approach. We're two percent into it halfway through. The opportunities for Project Home Key just don't happen. So for our second project, Triangle Courtyard, which is our application with Kings Gospel Mission and Cornerstone Industries, we put in an application to develop, they have a piece of land on Eleventh Avenue, and it's undeveloped completely. Our application was to develop the site, so bring in water, sewer, electricity, concrete pads, and met, and put in twenty-four manufactured homes. We were notified on November, November thirteenth of reservation of funds. So that is the first step in the award process. The state assumes with these projects, when we applied back in August, that we will keep working on it and keep funding it, and their funding would be available if we get to a reservation stage. Because it just doesn't really work that way, we, while Cornerstone Industries has been working on this project for two years, they have not found sufficient funding to actually develop the land or produce the units. We, how we applied to the state, we cannot execute, so we would have to reject it. However, after vetting through where we are, both with Cornerstone Industries and Kings Gospel Mission, and how we applied, we asked the state to basically change a hundred percent of the application, and they allowed us to. So what we, so we're going now through the second vetting. What we would propose is to basically contract with a third-party contractor to both manufacture the units or purchase existing manufactured units, and develop the site, but, but contract with us in such a way that we're getting a turnkey unit, so that we would, that a contractor, the third-party contractor would both develop the site, which is water, sewer, electricity, anything that actually is required to pass the county, city, and, and state regulations, and we would, and then turn over the units that are developed fully to us. Ultimately, Kings Gospel Mission would still be the owner. The county would then deed the units, not their, not the land, because it's theirs, but deed the units back to them, and they would have to operate the units for fifty-five years as low-income housing that would then be rented to the individuals. We're, we would, we're going through a process right now to figure out, is there such third-party contractor that in the, in that span of time is capable of doing both, delivering the units and developing the land? How Kings Gospel Mission was set up, they're not. But the state allowed us to figure out how to develop this contract in such a way that we're contracting for both, expending the funds. So the funds that are being used for this project, and really anything that we've been talking about COVID, is CARES Act funding. The funds would have to be expended through the end of December, and, but the delivery of the units and has to be by end of March, so that is for both of our, that was the truth for both of our projects, that, that actual units have to be operational, or fifty percent of the units have to be operational by end of March. We're going, we're working with Public Works, Community Development, and County Council's Office to both look at, are there vendors out there that can actually accomplish this? So far, we have a potential vendor, but we have not been successful with others we've approached, and, and then look at, can we structure an agreement in such a way that meets the state requirements, but also meets the county requirements in vetting the, vetting the units, vetting the, and not passing through the funds in case the project can be accomplished. I will be back to your board, well, your next board meeting, if this can be executed, because we would have to execute the entire thing in a single board date, both the award acceptance, approval of funds, and the contract, because the expenditure by the end of the year still exists. This is, the Kings Triangle project has been the one that they've been working on for a couple of years now. They approached us to apply, to be a co-applicant, actually, even before the July twenty-second application. I genuinely believe that this is a project that is good. It would provide low-income housing, and because the, the way the units are designed, it really, they would be two-room units, so it would be easier to even rent to our families. However, as we applied, we cannot execute it. The question is now, can we, can we figure out a project in such a way that we can still execute and then spend it, and we still need a little bit of time? The reason this is not an item is that we still need a little bit of time to do the due diligence to figure out if that, if it's actually doable.
Sonia, my question will be, this is a project that you set on Eleventh Avenue, or this is the one out on Tenth Avenue?
I'm sorry, Tenth Avenue. It's the Tenth Avenue.
I know, we got two.
No, no, this is, this is a Tenth Avenue project. We have, so pieces of the work that we've continued, since we've applied, have continued. This has gone in front of the Hanford City Council. It has gone in front of LAFCO. It, the, the Community District, I apologize, the Home Garden Community District. They've all said yes to extending water and sewer. LAFCO has done a site approval. The issue really in a, for, for Kings Gospel Mission to do this, and they intend to do this project regardless of what happens with Home Key. The, the ability to do it without funding is just challenging, so the, the movement has been slower than what we were hoping for. If we could have, if, if project was a further along, we'd have recommended just funding it as is. They, we would not be able to have sufficient spending and executed by December third, by December thirtieth, as designed. Turning an ability to adjust who does the, who does the production of the units, and who does the site development, it really would be an external third party. Kings Gospel Mission and Cornerstone Industries would still benefit, because we would be turning over the units. If we can do this, we would be turning over the units to them. They would still have the requirement to operate it as low-income housing. So, but I can't tell you- So what I can't tell you right now is that we truly have a contractor that can execute it the way um we need to in a timeframe.
Correct, and we've already got reservations from the government, the government office?
We do have a reservation and a commitment from the state to expedite the underwriting and the processing of the funds. They actually had a date um designed for that yet. We can't tell them yet that we are actually able to do it, even in our new proposed way. So the movement of the application was our new proposed way to see even if they would engage with us in completely changing our application. They said yes to that. What we don't know is if we have a vendor who can actually do both. We hope so. But the piece that's really challenging isn't the manufacturing of the units. It's the um, it's the site development and connection to electricity. While the work was done on water and sewer, and a lot of that is city and county, so our partners are in that respect solid. The challenge piece of connecting electricity to this unit and these units is the one question mark that we haven't vetted through, that we don't have any answer for yet. And we would need 12 units to be completely operational and basically people ready to move in. Um, so we need some additional time to figure that out before I bring the item to you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Nothing? Anything else? Do we have Lance Lepacott on the line? Lance, are you there to wanna comment on your, your little pro- your program we did with the $5 million?
Uh, yes. Mr. Chairman, Supervisor, Lance, we've got East County Director of Economic Workforce Development. Just wanted to put out there what we've got left. We're actually winding up the end of the $5 million program. Uh, currently, we have, we're gonna put out an additional nineteen applications to Corcoran, one final application to the city of Abenel, and then unincorporated to Devoe Moore and city of Hanford. All money has been put out. The additional, if you guys do go that route with funding, and I understand that there may be some complications for that. Right now, currently, we have 59 applications and ready to review alone. About $1.18 million in applications, and we have 100 incomplete applications. So we're working with businesses in time line. So just wanted to give a little bit of background on it. Overall, I think we're nearing the thousand employee mark, so there's been a thousand positions that have been positively affected by this money. Uh, and that's kind of the summary of where we're at right now. So there, uh, the needs assessment that we conducted is in line. There is a definite need for additional funding, if possible.
Are you still there?
You still here? Yes.
Okay, no, very good. I, I know the people that I've talked to that received money, they were, you know, we, we would like to promote what they did and how they got it, but they were kind of embarrassed that they actually had to, they qualified for it. Um, so kinda, it's kinda somber to know that, you know, you, you six months, your, or nine months, wherever it's gonna be when it's all said and done, that the money you got from the, it helped you out, just kept you there. And uh now that taxes are due and uh you're still taking care of your employees and trying to get businesses uh spur back up, and the future looks bleak right now. Um, even if we don't shut the community down, people are still unconscious about going out. So I do think that if we could finish funding this, it would be great for the, the remainder of businesses. I know that you have one story that you maybe wanna tell about a, a gal that applied late, and she's gonna lose her house and her business, and she will be homeless, so she will have no place to go if this, if she does not receive any money. So there's still a need out there, and uh, you know, my heart goes out to these people that have, you know, mortgaged their homes to start their business and only to be shut down because of some guideline. And now we have community people living their lives like they always have in the past, and it's causing a problem which we have to shut businesses down for. So uh, I think if we're all in a tough position here, we all need to do our part to not get COVID, get tested, so we can keep businesses open and we can wake back up here in April, May, or June and get back to normalcy. So uh, you wanna, you wanna hit on that one person, or can you do that?
Yeah, um, with, without being specific, we, we, we received several calls from small businesses, uh especially after the second uh rollback to Pervert Order came through, where um they're, to be frank, they're just completely, they've exhausted their savings. Um, had several small business owners that have called uh from the downtown areas that, that will be going under. Um, they're, they're outstanding. The one, one lady, I appreciate that she called, she was very explicit, she had actually tried to get a temporary loan on the equity on her house, keep the business going, and unfortunately um because this has progressed for so long, she's now gonna lose both her house and her business. So they're, they're definitely feeling it.
Thank, thank you Lance. And your staff, if you're, if you're able to get some more money, you can finish the project before end of the deadline, December 31st?
Yes, I did put this out to my manager, Screw. They are willing to, their, their idea is that we can get out with the ready review file we have currently, we could probably put out a million dollars in two days. Um, that'll take about a week and a half to go through all processes, but we can get it out pretty rapidly. We would make it before the deadline.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, any further questions or comments? I have one more. You have one?
Well, I know that you had a motion on the table, so if you move forward with that motion, I would request that your board give authorization to transfer, you said a million dollars from the Health Department to
He said 1.18, but I said a million.
To um the appropriate account for the, this program uh within the economic development and workforce development budget.
Mileage, I mean, COVID's gonna be here for a while. The government still should support us in our testing and uh all the issues that go on hand. Another comment that we had earlier today was a, a council brought up, we have a new person that pursued up our board, and I don't know how to say your last name or forgot it, but Tran, I think, welcome. And one thing you said was enforcement on COVID. And I don't know that the board has a policy for enforcement. I don't know who we enforce upon unless someone blatantly out there breaking the rules. I know that if we were gonna enforce, we should enforce on the first three people that left the community in our first teen, first 14-day period when we shut the whole thing down. And we didn't punish those first three people, but we're all paying a price for what they did. So I don't know where we would enforce it. Uh, I don't think that because we have a, 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 a business sitting out there openly uh trying to survive to pay their property tax or pay their family uh medical bills. Uh, I don't think we should enforce rules upon them when we have people out there having parties and weddings and, and uh Thanksgiving and you know, we had the community go down with the witches night out, and you know, these things are affecting all of us. So I don't know where you'd enforce, and I know that, I don't believe the board has an enforcement policy. We expect everybody to do the right thing and keep themselves safe.
I thought, I thought, I'm, I'm with you very much, Chair. I thought that uh we voted on it and, and we said that if uh there was an issue before somebody went and approached someone the wrong way in our district, the board uh made a decision that we each wanted to be notified first, and we probably would know the person, we could call them and approach them our own way and uh try to make a, something that was perceived as an issue is a non-issue. Is that, is that where you're at?
That's where I was at. And I know, we had one restaurant that, that I had no business owner, and he was, he wouldn't follow the rules. And uh, St. Peterson called me and says, I know you have a relationship with this guy, you might wanna call him. I call him. He totally misunderstood. He thought when we went from one tier to the next, that he was, he was done, he back inside. I explained it to him. Within 15 minutes, he had table the chairs of people sitting outside. I also noticed a chain restaurant that took their tent down and started serving inside and complained that we were going to enforce. And I said, you know, we didn't do anything to you when you took your tent down. So, you know, you need to put your damn tent back up and start following some of the rules. We're not enforcing it. You need to do what's right. So don't complain to me now when, you know, we weren't doing anything before. So I think it's, it's communication what we need to have here. I don't like the word uh enforcement on this. Uh, nothing against our new employee. I, I think, I'll create great hopes as well, but I don't know when you started enforcing or who you enforced too, because you didn't enforce it for the first idiots that left the community, went to San Mateo and brought brackets virus share community. You don't enforce it upon them, you don't enforce it upon me. And I just lost a good friend yesterday due to COVID, lasted in two days. So I fully, I am aware of the situation. But it didn't come from business and didn't come from someone making a living, it just happened. So I don't know who you didn't force that upon. I just wanna make sure I get that, my, my point out on that one. And I got a motion on table to transfer uh money, and I heard the 1.18, but I said 1 million to uh Economic Development Corporation. Guys are willing to do that? Uh, that'd be great. If not, it is going to Health Department, we'll continue business.
Mr. Chair, I'd like, I'd like to help you get there. Could I just ask where the million would be coming from though? We, as I understand, there's 4 million um uh that the CAO pointed out, so out of what pot of money?
Well, we saved 1 million dollars from not doing so sore uh testing.
Testing is a big part of it.
Yeah.
Testing was
I would, I would assume if we're gonna keep testing, if we can go to April now, I would assume that we reached out to our local leaders, our officials uh from Senate and Assembly and say, hey, we're gonna need some more money if this keeps going. If we don't have the, the, uh, you don't, you don't have the, the virus, the vaccine. Uh, we wanna support the businesses so that, you know, when April 10th rolls around, they still have money to pay their property taxes and help uh keep our county alive.
Are we, okay, so to test till April, are we paying for that, or is that a free resource now?
We already have a, a, allocation for that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, before, and before I could get there, could I just ask Mr. Hill's opinion uh where he's at on, on that million dollars?
Yeah, did you hear the question?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Verboon. Uh, to the board, if we were gonna take money from anywhere, it would be more appropriate to take it from uh testing. Uh, I feel that uh our most resources need to be dedicated to the isolation and support to uh make sure that we keep those at home to slow the spread. So if we're gonna take it from anywhere, I'd prefer it to come from testing.
Okay.
With that said, testing, so how far does that take you out? Does it take, it'll take you to April, or does it reduce it back to February?
So we have, uh, we've been told that we have the testing resource at Optum Serve as well as the state lab and the color registration until April 2021. Uh, so that's the uh, the testing supplies, the lab, uh, those things. We have to provide the staff for the testing at the mobile unit now. Uh, in the past, when we had the federal resource, we were just providing admin staff. But now we have to provide admin staff and the medical staff. That is not a, a heavy lift. I'm sure my staff are not happy with that statement. Uh, so I'd like to retract that. Um, but uh, when it comes to uh longevity, um, we're really uncertain. This, the state has pointed out that there may be, and I emphasize maybe a share of cost, but they haven't told us what that is. So we're, we're facing an unknown where the state may come out in the next month and say, you now have to pay $20,000 a month to continue that resource. Um, uh, so that's an unknown. And in addition to that, uh, hopefully the vaccine will be viable and it will be in use, and we won't have to rely on testing funds uh or testing resources and that, and the quantities we see now after April 21st, or excuse me, 2021. Uh, but those are all unknowns at this time.
Well, um, so our, well, right until you said that, right at the end, I was gonna say you just gave us some kind of assurance. Uh, uh, moving, uh, moving forward there. Um, well, Mr. Chair, I mean, go, okay, so on the issue of the tests, right? I s- I just wanna say this. So one, I don't see that today we're taking from the testing because I think back in August, the board already made a decision and, and tabled that, that money. So um, as far as prior to that, on the million dollars for the uh, of the testing, I think we had a conversation, the questions was asked and an- answered. It's politics, and you win some, you lose some. This is a separate policy issue on a million dollars that's sitting there. And you're absolutely right on the small businesses. We funded them 5 million. We all worked together to do that. And I believe that replenishing that with another million is appropriate. So I'd like to second your motion, Mr. Chair.
We have a second. Uh, any more discussion? You okay with the funding? You think you can handle that?
We will handle it. We'll move forward. And, you know, the other thing I wanna know is we're, it's still unknown if we'll get the HEROES Act. Um, there's still discussions going on um back east on that, and so it's hopeful that we see some more federal funds come down the pipe.
We, we use our lobbyists to this point to help make sure we have uh continued funding for future, find some other paths to help us out.
Yeah.
I don't see an end. So uh, I just don't wanna be, be dirty community here and only the strong survive. And when I'm here, I think the people, we all feed off each other, and we need to take care of each other at this point.
Bring, Mr. Chair, on that, on that note, um, I'd say our next board meeting, let's, let's get a chart of all the money that's left, and let's see if maybe there's even more to add on, but for today, uh, that million.
Right.
I can bring that, and I can also show you the projections uh the Health Department is looking, that they're going to need going forward.
I don't wanna shoot myself in the foot and say, the testing, it hurt, you know. I would like to do more than testing. I would like to be able to separate and cure, not just separate and then hope it doesn't happen again. I, I mean, I test, you know, I think I'm on my 12th visit in 12 weeks, uh, knowing I'm safe. And I don't know that we're not using that throughout the community. That's gonna cost. Everybody tests, it's gonna cost a lot more. It's $170 per test, I believe, uh, it adds up. And plus personnel to give a test. But I think the tests are getting easier, and it might even be a little home version of it in the near future, so. And there's also a lookout, anybody that a body creates that you may never get the virus, you may not have. So um, with that, we have a motion and a second. I'm Adam Kirk, we're going to roll.
Your next?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Yes.
Luke Verboon?
Yes.
Frank Peterson?
Hi.
Richard P. Mendez?
Yes.
I'm in favor. We approved uh 1 million to go to Economic Corporation. Lance, keep up the good work. Uh, you have work cut out for you. I know Thanksgiving, but I'm sure your staff is gonna be on it. Get this excited as soon as possible so we uh don't fail. So thank you. Okay, we're gonna go on now to board member announcements. Advisor Valley?
Uh, just very quickly, just to put on the record, Operation Gobble 2020 COVID style, Mr. Chair, seven, 692 to be exact turkeys. Um, unfortunately
You got 183 tests in one day, one spot.
There you go. Two, Avanell Corcoran. Uh, so that, uh, and we did have to uh consolidate uh Home Garden to Corcoran, which was a pain in the butt and not fair to Home Garden, and Kettleman to Avanell, which isn't fair to Kettleman. But we did do that to cut down to five traditional gobble events to two, to minimize the exposure uh to the volunteers and to not create these uh large gatherings. And then it's also important to know, Avanell had a separate turkey giveaway at the same time as ours yesterday. So there was all, at one point in Avanell, there was um, with 330 we took and their 400, there was 770 um turkeys and um chickens on the pallets there for that community.
That said, the governor didn't want to have turkey. What are we gonna do about that?
Uh, well, there's gonna be 700 violations thanks to Operation Gobble, because we're gonna, we're gonna keep feeding people no matter what. But I, I wanna thank uh Ms. Nolan on the record. Uh, she's our fiscal agent at Corcoran Emergency Aid, and thank the donors who um contributed to her organization to buy these turkeys. Thank you.
Advisor Peterson?
Well, I'll look at County Council and say, uh, I'm gonna violate HIPAA.
You can violate your own HIPAA.
No, I, I uh, uh, ended up with a positive COVID test uh, and I clear uh quarantine in about five days.
What?
No, I cleared quarantine last week, but uh
I can touch you now, Craig.
At least you already got a crack in it.
I don't need to see your crack. But uh, no, I, I just wanted, you know, it's really the tale of two stories. And uh, you know, it affects people differently, and unfortunately, in my case, it was uh very mild. Um, you know, a little head cold and, and uh some body aches, and that was it. And uh, to the extent that, you know, I wouldn't have believed that, you know, that was what was causing the issue. But uh, thanks to Melanie, and I made a call and got tested and, and uh, you know, is what it is. And 14 days later, you're free to walk about in the herd, and now I have diplomatic immunity, so.
Glad you're all right, I didn't know that.
No comment.
Advisor Peterson.
Wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, if we get there.
Get turkey sandwiches inside. No turkey. Bologna sandwiches in.
Advisor Devs?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, period goes back two weeks. Veterans Day, American Post 3 held an event at the uh Hanford Cemetery. Brigadier General David Smith, Commander of the Air Component of uh California Air Guard, uh, was, did a wonderful job addressing uh the crowd as far as the future of the armed services or armed forces. Um, smaller crowd than normal, um, lot in the, uh, but uh definitely a good crowd. Cal Vans continues to work uh through their operational issues. Uh, currently, there's 621 vans, down from 854, uh, reflecting the changes in, in uh working conditions. Uh, 126 van pool vans as well as uh 495 of the, on the farm labor, labor side. And we uh anticipate the seasonal dip coming uh in that uh ag labor side. Um, out of all of those um vans, we've only had four COVID-related incidents. Um, and we continue to change uh operating uh uh procedures. Um, and uh continue to uh encourage uh Um, and, uh, continue to, uh, encourage, uh, all the riders and everyone involved to, to practice all of the good conditions you can in, in a van, uh, van pool situation. We also continue to have the challenges of, uh, insurance. Uh, many of the insurance policies, uh, are, are due calendar year. Um, nobody is bidding. Uh, we do, we are fortunate that the existing, um, insurance company is willing to extend the services, but that will cost at a premium. Uh, so we're continuing to negotiate and try to work through that. Uh, continue to work with the Kings County Homeless Shelter Project. Um, and it's nice to be working with those folks on that project. Uh, the Kings County Behavioral Health Board, uh, had a special meeting in order to discuss the data notebook. And then data notebook is a kind of a unique way of saying the report card at Kings County and how, uh, behavioral health services were delivered, uh, in the last year. Uh, both meeting the goals as well as setting, uh, uh, goals for the coming year. And so that went well. Uh, continue to attend more darn webinars to try to figure out how to communicate with Skype and all of these different applications. I can do it good when you're right there online and then two minutes later, when you're on your own, I can't seem to follow it. But we'll continue to work through those issues. West Hills College Paramedic Program, uh, continue to have their, uh, meeting to discuss, um, uh, changes in their program. It's now kind of a hybrid system, uh, with, uh, online learning and then one day a week lab, uh, because there's just a lot of things in, uh, the paramedic program that you just can't learn online. But we'll continue to work on that, getting a little bit of, uh, traction in other, uh, universities and colleges, community colleges are, are looking at, at, uh, what West Hills is doing and wants to copy the lab part of it. And they'll probably still have the, uh, I mean, the lecture part of it, the lab part, they will still have to do, you know, locally. But, um, it's, it's, that's kind of a nice deal for, um, for that program. And as Ed was talking about, uh, the paramedics and some of the, uh, ambulance staff would, uh, might be able to train, uh, to do some of the immunizations and, and giving the shots. So that's another, uh, core group of individuals that can be, uh, utilized to do that service. Um, attended the Brown Bag. I want to thank Chairman Verboon and Rebecca for doing a wonderful job. I think that's a good program that Kings County does, um, allows, uh, staff to have access. Um, and, and I just think that that was a very good, uh, uh, program, uh, talking about all of the, uh, kind of the last, uh, history of, of Kings County in the last year. And I think that, I think many of the employees, uh, that attended were very much, uh, impressed. So thank you both for doing that. I know that's a little bit hard work, but it's easy giving away the tickets at the end and, and making everybody happy.
We use Easter baskets at a Christmas party though.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And we did it virtually. So we made it work.
Yeah, that worked out pretty well.
It didn't come out all right. All I could see was my, my iPhone.
Yeah, no, you did good. Um, yeah, very good. So I, uh, and, and again, everybody's learning in this virtual, uh, virtual, uh, reality. But, you know, yeah, it seemed to be, worked, you know, very well. Um, Calviva will continue to work on, uh, virtually, uh, 370,000 souls, uh, in that three county region now, uh, are covered under, uh, Calviva. Under the governor's, uh, payment plan, we continue to lose about 1.4 million dollars a month, uh, covering because the premium doesn't cover the cost. Um, and, uh, we continue to work with the governor. We're not the only, um, managed care plan that's having those kind of losses. And so everyone's in the same, same boat. The, the other thing that makes it very difficult is the governor was going to take over the, um, pharmacy side of it. Um, and so we made all, because, and because we have to, uh, let everybody know 180 days before the change happens. Uh, so we made all those changes and the governor doesn't want to take it in January. He wants to postpone it till April. Um, all of our pharmacy contracts are set to expire December. Um, so now we, we're not sure what we're going to be able to do in order to deliver pharmacy, uh, products. Many of them have laid off staff and gone in a different direction. And so it'll be a, a difficult, um, issue, uh, as far as the pharmacy side. Calviva members, uh, testing positive for COVID out of 370,000, we had 335 and unfortunately 17 deaths in the three county region, prison of Kings Madera. Um, and that's just, um, Calviva membership. Uh, South Fork Kings continues to meet, work on policies and budgets and, uh, we, uh, got all of that adjusted and continue to move forward. The, uh, some of the policies, you know, we'll, at another time we'll talk about, um, but I think it's very important for the streamlining of the process and allowing the regulatory boards to do what it needs to do. Uh, yesterday, the Kings County Homeless Collaborative also had a meeting and talked about some of the, uh, past accomplishments as well as the future goals. And that is a little bit behind in meeting their, uh, obligation of bringing a report to this board, um, which again, doesn't have to be delivered, uh, orally, but I think just a written report, uh, one-page document, I think would be more than, more than enough. So hopefully we'll get that done in the next couple of weeks to finish off, uh, 2020 and start, uh, 2021 in a, in a new, new, uh, new step in a new, uh, direction. And I certainly want to thank Sonya for stepping up and, uh, volunteering for, for the vice chair position. Certainly appreciate it. Um, with that, my two. I do, uh, want to join Supervisor Fagundes and wishing everyone a very happy and safe, uh, Thanksgiving. Uh, these are difficult times, you know, and, and, yeah, and I just, I, I don't know what, I, I just don't know what to do, to be honest with you. Uh, we're doing a lot more Christmas visits, uh, on Zoom and we'll just do what we can. Thank you.
Are you able to do, uh, your pictures, sir?
Well, no, we're, uh, photoshopping them in with, I think, anybody with photoshopping skills, it's no wonder the courts don't want to accept any of that stuff because man, I'll tell you what, they'll look pretty, pretty, uh, pretty impressive when you get at the end of the day. Um, we did, uh, we did, uh, almost, well, we did eight. We had 10 scheduled, only, uh, we were only ma- able to make contact with eight on Sunday. Uh, but some of the Photoshop skills of some people are just remarkable. Um, it's just a remarkable skill. And that's probably one of the next webinars or the next class I need to set up, uh, on is, uh, Photoshop. Because I think that's a neat, uh, kind of a neat, uh.
You got to start kindergarten.
Skill.
Because they got, they got it going on in kindergarten.
I, I know. That's what I, that's what I can't understand, you know, and, uh, I, I, yeah.
Hey, well, thank you. Uh, last week, had a busy week, started off with my flu shot, my COVID test and gave blood all at the same time. And then did, uh, uh, press conference with, uh, tribal, tribal leaders out of the new fire, fire station. And then, uh, followed up on, uh, Wednesday with a tour of the new fire station. We're kind of modeling that for in Visay, Ferguson and Shirk. Spent about two and a half hours there with the tribal leaders and their staff, uh, going over the training facilities and what our vision would like in the, in the future and the issues they've had. And they got, uh, we got the architect plans from them to look at that. So they were excited and it's kind of cool to be, see someone excited about spending 21 and a half million dollars for you. Uh, so that was exciting. Uh, did the brown bag. I think that was, uh, that was pretty good. You know, we couldn't, me and Rebecca couldn't do it in our own office, we did separate offices and, uh, uh, well, it was good. I enjoyed that. That was, came up very well. Uh, something else I had. Uh, yeah, no, we, you know, a lot, a lot of family issues. I've been getting tested. I did more than once a week. I'm going to go see my dad and it goes to show you, you know, you, you want to do the right thing. And, you know, we're not having Thanksgiving in our houses. My wife and, uh, one of my daughters, no family coming over. Uh, but my dad, their 60th anniversary is Wednesday. Well, you know, I'll come, I'll come cook you dinner so you don't have to go out. And, uh, so I'm taking them dinner. I'm leaving tomorrow morning, first thing. I'm going to cook them dinner, come back Thursday morning. And, uh, because I'm coming back Thursday morning, because what are they doing? They're going to go out to dinner. So, and no matter what you do to keep things safe, people do what they want to do anyways. You know, you can't say not to do something. It's, I don't know. It's just the way it goes.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, you got to be responsible for your own health at some point. The enforcement part, I'm serious. I mean, uh, I don't know where you start enforcing. I understand the frustration with it. I understand in my household, I have my rules and I follow them. And I have good friends that, uh, they don't care. And I can, I mean, we could separate our friendship because of the way they feel about it, but it's their choice. And I don't have to, you know, jeopardize my livelihood by going to their house. So I don't know where you enforcing. I'm very concerned about going out and enforcing the wrong people because you were able to catch them. Uh, I think it's important that we look at the whole community as a whole. If you guys want to have a workshop on this, I think we should. Uh, it's going to be extremely hard, extremely demanding. And you're only going to catch, catch people that are just trying to stay alive. The people that have got it under control are going to get away with it. And you're going to divide this community faster than you ever have before. And if I said before, if I catch one person enforcing a rule on, uh, someone trying to make a living, I'll teach them what it's like not to have an income. I'm serious about that. I don't like the word enforcement, especially when it comes to our rule. It could start at the state. The governor can enforce a rule just as easy as anybody else and he has chosen not to. You go to Arizona, mandatory mask enforced and the businesses are staying open. I think that's fine. He has not done that. He is not led by example. He went out to dinner and, you know, he, he can go out to dinner. They're all tested negative, that's fine. But to enforce it upon somebody else, it's just get everybody tested, keep them separate and put it on your own, so to be, have your own responsibility. Wyoming, same way, enforcement, you're open, you do your own thing, keep your distance, it's fine. Here, our leader has not chosen to put a mask on. Everybody is getting tighter, but he could have said mandatory mask and a type of mask and a whole bit from the beginning. Have not done that. So I don't want to start here and keep telling you by enforcing it unless we have it. Clearly identify the person need to be enforced upon. There's a lot of parties in the backyard, a lot of parties in the front, front yard on the weekends. And if you start taking businesses and not picking parties, you're going to separate the community. And if you separate certain parties versus other parties, you're going to separate by race. I think we got to be very, very careful when we come to do this. And I think we need to have workshop and have some kind of form of identity, something in writing before we allow that to happen in our community. So before any enforcement is done, I think it's just handholding, explaining it. And if someone blatantly gets in our face, I then all means, you know, to stop it. But if we're getting a problem, I mean, we've had problems, we've had recitals, we've had lots of stuff happening here in our community. And if we're not having a problem with one event, we can't enforce another because we think we're going to have a problem. We have to have actual facts and we don't have those rules because that is in the contract taking through HIPAA and through the health department. And we don't have access to that. So I, I think the health department needs to be brought in and maybe we have a closed session, uh, to guide them to where our problems are at weekly so that we can start enforcing in certain areas if we're having outbreaks. But again, you throw in the prisons and that, and that point, we have no control. And we're getting, we're paying the price for the prison is not being able to get it under control. So, uh, it may be something we live with the rest of our lives and I don't want to divide our community. I live here, whatever I enforce, I have to pay for when I go out public. And I'm really, it's been really hard since it started to even have a life at night without the phone going off 20 or 30 times a night. And people being pissed off at you because they think you did something because they heard a rumor from somebody else. And I about had enough and I'm about ready to walk off my job because of this. So we're going to, we're going to get this under control, we'll live our lives. And that, that's the last thing I want to say about that. This time we're going to go into closed session. Everyone's at.
Do you want to skip up?
Oh, uh, update.
I'll make it quick. Um, correspondence, there is a notice of potential responsible agency of legal action pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act challenging the Department of Resources, Water Resources, um, from the Board of Forestry and Fire Protection, there's a resolution temporarily suspending the board's fire safe regulations in a, in the application of the state responsible area. And then you'll also find the Kings County Investment Pool Transaction Activity Report. There's no upcoming events. Upcoming agenda items on December 8th will be the COVID-19 update, water management tools, contract amendment. Also the SB 81, um, planned specs and advertising from the District Attorney's Office, Child Advocacy, Advocacy Center Program Grant from Finance, the 2021 Statement of Investment Policy. Also the Delegation of Investment Authority to the Kings County Director of Finance. From Fire, our mutual aid agreement for the Lemoore Naval Air Station. From the Assessor, an agreement for petroleum property appraisal services. Um, the board meeting schedule will become before your board on the 15th. Also the annual Williams Report on Kings County Schools will come before your board on the 15th as well as master fee updates and impact fee five-year report on the 15th. So, thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, you know, again, before we go to closed session, everybody have a great holiday, safe holiday. Remember, keep your distance, don't share your food, uh, wear a mask around strangers and wash your hands frequently and get tested. You tested today at LeMoyne High School. Uh, you should have got tested last week, but I mean, you want to make sure you're safe before you go to your family's house. So I made sure everybody was tested, uh, that's going to go with me to Arizona. But, uh, you just, that certainty is, is, is not good. Okay, we're going to go to closed session. Uh, significant closure of litigation, one case, government code section 54956.9 E dash 2, dash E dash 2. Significant with labor negotiator meeting confirmed, government code section 5954957.6. Uh, negotiator, Michael Campbell, hearing Shay Johnson, Liberty, Anthony Whitmore, Blue Collar, SEIU Detention Deputy Association, Firefighters Association, General Coseya, Probation Officers Association, Prosecutors Association, Supervisors Association, Government Representative Management, uh, personal matters, government code section 54957, Public Employment, Title Public Works Director. Meeting will be adjourned until December 8th, 2020, 9:00 AM. And do you expect any reporting out?
I do not.
No reporting out to be expected and will be adjourned till December 8th. And we wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and please stay safe.
Supervisor Chairman, um, when do you want to handle the IHSS that was scheduled for 11:00 AM?
Soon as we get back.
Soon as you get back before you do closed session.
Because Frank's got to come over.
Frank was under the impression you preferred that he not come to chambers, but he is prepared to come to chambers or join virtually, whichever you prefer.
I don't think we really need him. Uh, I think that it's all budget and, uh, activity, so. Yeah, exactly. It's only going to be if I, or you want to take care of it right now?
Yeah, we'll, we'll close.
It'll be right now.
We'll close our meeting.
Yeah.
And then we'll start the new one.
Yeah.
Uh, the Kings County Board Supervisor Meeting is now, yes, ma'am.
Both the regular and special meetings are being closed simultaneously.
Kings County Board Supervisors, special and regular meetings are going to be closed at this point. We still conduct our closed session afterwards. At this time, we will open up a new meeting called the Kings County In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority. It is Tuesday, December 24th. This is a regular meeting and, uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ready for roll, Paul? I apologize.
Thank you.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Here.
Doug Verboon?
Here.
Frank Peterson, Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Yep, and we're going to go to unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly report to the desk at this time on any item on the agenda. Is anybody on record to speak?
No hands up.
If they have a fine phone, we're going to go to item number three, general business item. The elected chair and vice chair, 2020.
To appoint, uh, Verboon and Peterson respectively.
Motion by Supervisor Nevs, second by Supervisor Fagundes, for Peterson and Verboon. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Verboon?
Hi.
Frank Peterson?
Hi.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes, we have approved as recommended, so I will say chair. Yes, this is the first meeting of the year?
No, the last one was a special meeting. So, and you can't make appointments on a special meeting, so this is, uh, the default back. It's a regular meeting. So, yeah, you only, you only beat official chair one year, I mean, one month. Same pay.
Same pay, okay.
Zero.
Approval of the minute, May 19th, 2020. I'll move. Moved by Supervisor Fagundes, second by Supervisor Peterson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Frank Peterson?
Hi.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Okay, five in favor. We were approved the minutes as presented. Uh, increase, increase to IHSSS, the fiscal year 2020 and 2021 budget. Any discussion on that?
All right, so Sonya Brugge, your Public Authority Executive Director, um, just wanted to, uh, present the item. And we had an extra S there. Um, your board approved the public authority budget, um, add the fiscal year 1920 allocations. Our final allocations for fiscal year 2021 were not released until recently. And the increase between the two is mostly due to the funding that's available for purchase of PPE for our IHSS providers um, and recipients. Um, some of the stock, we have been distributing, uh, PPE to both recipients and providers, um, well, since about July. Um, but we now have actually specific dedicated funding for that. So the request here is to, um, ask your board, before we take it to the Board of Supervisors, to approve the budget increase and essentially adjust our budget to our new approved state allocation.
Thank you. Any further comments? Moved by Supervisor Fagundes, second by Supervisor Nevs. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yeah.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Verboon?
Hi.
Frank Peterson?
Hi.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
If we approve the budget for the IHSS for 2021, uh, we're going to go to. Uh, we're going to go to the uh staff announcements and a brief report of activity of in-home supportive services.
So I distributed to your board, we have been canceling monthly regular meetings uh because there really has been no specific um requests or agendas for your board to um act on. We have been sending this IHSS caseloads at a glance and um you have October uh data uh with you. I also have Monica Connor, who is our Deputy Director over Adult Services online. Uh, if you have any specific questions of how it's going in either pub- with Public Authority or in IHSS. Um, and then I know, Monica, if there's anything specific to share with the board.
Good morning, or afternoon, I'm sorry. I lost track of time. Are you guys able to hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, so um Monica Connor, Deputy Director, the Adults Division. Um, I pretty much just at a glance where we are with um IHSS and the Public Authority. Um, I was just gonna review a, a couple of these boxes, but really, um, I don't have to for the, for the sake of time. It's all before you. Um, I just want to point out a little bit, um, in the chart, we have the, the uh population that uh Kings County In-Home Supportive Services is made up of. And we have um listed in the box over to the right, caseload percentage by age group. It tells us um that we have minors, um disabled adults and the elderly. And so that's what that box is, is telling us. And the majority of our population in IHSS falls within the disabled adults. Um, the other piece that I was just going to point out, if we can uh move on to the next slide. Oh, let's see. Okay, so just the next slide tells us um the important piece of the work that we do in Public Authority is to make sure that we have sufficient providers to serve our in-home um supportive services um um recipients. And the first box over to my left shows of the total number of providers. We have two thousand three hundred and fifty-one. Um, but at, what I really wanted to point out, especially right now during COVID, is the box right below that um that shows that um we have COVID backup providers who are uh willing and signed up to respond in the event we need providers to step in when there is a COVID positive recipient. Um, right below that, we have um two hundred and forty-one that shows up as uh backup providers. Those are the providers that are uh called in whenever there is um a need for, in an emergency situation, to step in to provide some help. Um, let's say that a recipient, um, their, their main provider goes on vacation or um becomes ill. These are the folks that are signed up to um call in uh if we need somebody to step in quickly. The really neat thing about Kings County is that we have um an active registry. So we have about a hundred and fifty-five um providers on that list that we can pull from if um i- if there's a brand-new recipient that um is, is in need of a provider. Now, the, the really nice thing about this program um is specifically, you know, I, I live in this community, so it's super important to me to know that um, that, that we have those in, in need and the vulnerable that have good people to care for them. And it shows that in Kings County, we have seventy-four point two percent of those providers are relatives. So bringing in um, you know, their, their own uh people who know them, family, um friends that um know their, their situation and are able to respond to their needs. So that, that's a, a very important piece. Um, Sonya mentioned the PPE. Um, up in the right-hand corner, um, we have the Personal Protective Equipment Distribution Box. We are handing it out weekly and uh both recipients and providers are coming in. We have Friday, set up Friday for a major pickup day, but they can come in at any time. They just call one of our PA staff and they're available to um hand out the PPE um that is needed at, at that time. Staff are still engaging with or serving the providers. Um, PA staff are still serving the providers um a little bit in person. Whenever someone um is in need of just some guidance on the electronic timesheet piece, um, staff are making themselves available. They wear their masks. They set up appropriate social um distancing. Um, and, and the importance of this piece is that um, you know, we do have providers who don't speak English or um they're not great with electronics. And um the computer piece just makes it a lot more frustrating for them to figure out. So staff are available to help uh with that when they call. Um, and so that's uh an important piece. The other thing that I wanted to, to point out is um that the orientations for new providers um have gone virtual. So uh new providers can log on and watch the orientation video and fill out paperwork. Um, and, but we still have in-person um, in-person orientations, very small. Uh, what we've discovered is that the preference for new providers is to do the virtual um orientation. So that's been working out really well. Um, so overall, we're doing good. Staff are, are paying close attention to the needs of the programs, both in IHSS and um, and PA. They are, we have a pretty mature staff where they're being very careful, taking care of themselves, staying safe if they have to go out in the field. But we're still available to meet the needs of the community. And that's, that's an update on where we are today.
Thank you, Monica. Appreciate that. Any question or comment? I said one in uh ten spoken languages. I understand English, Spanish, Portuguese, and none other than law, blouse, and Japanese, but what is Tagalog?
So.
Filipino.
Filipino, okay. Never heard of that. Okay, thank you. Learn something there every day.
Ready, one, two, and off.
Uh, we have board member now. Does any board member like to have anything to say here besides uh they learned a new language today? Hey, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. So we're going to go now to closed session. And I think for Supervisor Valley's uh benefit, we're going to do the Public Works Director first. You might look around.